Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Calabasas City Council of Wednesday, October 13th, 2021. It is 7:09 PM. Tonight, I am joined by Mayor Potem, Mary Sue Mauer, council members Peter Kraut, Alicia Weintraub, and David Shapiro. This meeting is being conducted utilizing Zoom teleconferencing. The live stream of the meeting may be viewed on the city's CTV Channel 3 and/or online at If you plan to provide public comment, please press raise hand if you're joining via Zoom or star nine if you're joining via phone and star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the city you live in. You'll be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. In the event a quorum of the city council loses electrical power or suffers an internet connection outage not corrected within 15 minutes, or in the event a disruption which prevents the city from broadcasting the meeting to and receiving comment from members of the public using the Zoom or a telephone call-in system, then the meeting will be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be continued to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council. Any other agenda items the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Mari Hernandez, our city clerk.
Please join me as I look in our flag. My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Aye, aye, yes.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Mauer?
Aye.
Mayor Bosajin?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
The city council met in closed session prior to tonight's open session, so I'll turn to the city attorney and ask him whether or not we have anything to report out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met in closed session to consider two items. First, conference of real property negotiator regarding 27040 Malibu Hills Road, Calabasas. No reportable action taken. Second, to consider the public employee performance variation of the city manager. No reportable action taken. The third item, conference of real property negotiator regarding APN 2080014004 is continuing until after the meeting, and no report of action is expected. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have several presentations. Do we have Ms. Salazar folks here?
Mari? I do not see her, Mr. Mayor.
That one for now, and we'll go to the next one. We have a presentation by Antoine Kunch from the Resource Conservation District of the Santa Monica Mountains regarding defensible space and home hardening. You have a little PowerPoint presentation. Antoine?
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Thank you for having me. Let me start my presentation. So, thank you for having me tonight. I really appreciate the time that you're locating for this presentation about wildfire preparation. So my name is Antoine Kunch. I am the Community Resilience Coordinator for the Resource Conservation District of the Santa Monica Mountains. For those of you who are not familiar with Conservation District, or RCD for short, we are special district of the state of California, so public agency, and we work to promote the land stewardship and resource conservation. We have a team of biologists working in the Santa Monica Mountains, a team of educators working throughout the region with local schools, and a community resilience department that I lead working mostly on wildfire preparedness and sustainable land, sustainable land use. I want to start my presentation with a map of the Woolsey Fire that happened back in 2018, and especially taking a look at the number of structures that had been damaged or destroyed during that event. In total, there were close to 100,000 acres burned during that fire and close to 2,000 structures damaged and destroyed, and also three fatalities during that event. So what we want to do with our program that the RCD is to avoid that amount of destructions and to get our communities ready for when the next fire will hit, so that we are sure that the landscape is fire-wise and that the structures have been hardened. This is a photo taken before the Woolsey Fire in the area of Malibu High School in December 2017, and the same photo wrapped after Woolsey where we can see homes that have been destroyed, including homes that had sufficient or close to sufficient indefensible space, some had like the structure here in the middle that had close to 200 feet of brush clearance. So we want to understand why homes get destroyed and why they get ignited. In most cases, they get ignited because of either direct flame impeachment, radiant heat, or windborne embers. And according to the LA County Fire, windborne embers are the cause of ignition of homes in more than 50% of the case. So we have programs at the RCD to help homeowners understand and identify the risk of ignition and suggestion and recommendation for best practices to reduce that risk and make sure that the home is hardened against those causes of ignition. So before I continue, I want to do now acknowledge the Cal Fire and California Climate Investment. Those have been funding a website called defensiblespace.org that was published last year, and it's kind of like a new hub, a new platform with all the best practices for home hardening and fire-wise landscaping. This website was created through a technical advisory committee that included Los Angeles County Fire Department, Ventry County Fire Department, the researchers from the USGS and the University of California Agriculture and Natural Resources, as UCLA, the National Park Service, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, the Los Angeles County of Regional Planning, and several nonprofits that you may recognize, such as California Native Plant Society, The Paint Foundation. So it's really a collective effort from very different stakeholders in the region, from regulatory agencies to nonprofit and researchers. So what can you find on defensiblespace.org? You can find information about home hardening, starting with the home is the first thing that homeowners should do in Calabasas and across the Santa Monica Mountains to really reduce the risk using fire-resistant materials and prevent ember intrusion. There's a section dedicated to defensible space and how people can design native fire-wise landscaping around their home to reduce the chances of ignition and, in case of ignition, reduce the chance of fire spread to the structure. We also have information about community preparedness. You are only as strong as a community as you weakest link, so we really want people to understand how they can work as a community, as a group, to reduce the shared risk against wildfire. We have some interactive mapping tool. We have a location page where people can type in their address, see the type of environment they're in, see their local fire station, and different layers with emergency resources. We have also a plant section. We are a conservation agency, and we want to demystify some very important aspects. For example, what is a fire-resistant plant, or the benefit of native plants, and how all of that fits within the concept of defensible space to reduce the risk for your home and your property. And we have a list of additional resources of all the resources we use to compile and create that website. So I'm going to give you a really brief snapshot of the type of, how the information is presented on the website. So this is the page you will land on when you go on the home section for home hardening. And you can see that at the very top, it's divided in categories of new construction, upgrade or retrofit, and maintenance. Below that, there's a subdivision by architectural feature. You have a page designed for roof material, one for the eaves, the gutters, the vents. So we really tackle each aspect of the home with the best practices to reduce the chances of embers getting trapped in the eaves or getting through the vents and igniting the home from the inside out. We have a diagram that was designed to help homeowners prioritize based on their budget and based on their priority to understand if they need to change their vents first or if they need to change the eaves first. This gives them an understanding of the relative cost of those different upgrades and the level of priority that they should rank those different upgrade. And finally, on the right-hand side, we have a list of recommendations and background information. So here it's like more textually, we really complete and full description of what are fire-resistant materials and how to use them in upgrades. For the landscape, it's the very similar type of information for new landscape, upgrading something existing, or seasonal maintenance. Like, a lot has to do with maintenance, and that's the key message across our website. People should start with maintenance, getting rid of dead cluster, leaf litters, all of that are easily ignited by embers and are very often the cause of ignition on a property. We divide then the defensible space by zone. For the first zone zero, from the first five feet around the home, that should be extremely important when you do defensible space and you have all of the guidelines online. And we have a diagram as well to help people understand where they are in the landscape, the type of plant and spacing that they should implement as they move outwards from that, from the home. Always start with the home and move outwards to the native habitat and the landscape. And a recommendation list as well on the right-hand side. So those are the differences, the different zones, and the logic is really, as you move outwards, the first five feet, the first 30 or 50 feet, up to 100 feet or 200 feet, depending on the local regulation, and into the native habitat. And a quick snapshot of the community section, where when you are in a very close community, how do you deal with overlapping defensible space zones? So we all that explained as well in the comedic section when you want to work as a community or as a group. The programs we offer at the RCD are multiple. The first one we have is a home ignition zone evaluation, where we go onsite and we give an evaluation of the structure and the landscape for about 45 minutes to an hour. And at the end of this evaluation, each homeowner receives a detailed report going feature by feature, looking at the vents, the windows, the roof, the gutters, and the different zones of the landscape that I described earlier. We identify a top five priorities to help them understand what they should tackle first, and all of that information is private. The RCD does not share anything with insurance companies or fire agencies or any third party. We have a defensible space consultation program that is kind of an extension of a home ignition zone evaluation, where here we focus on the landscape and we provide homeowner with a simple and simplified design plan for the different zone of the landscape. So we give them recommendations for plant type, location, spacing, and maintenance. We have a community chipping program where we can cover chipping costs for people who are managing the landscape, reducing the amount of dead branches of brush. We have that available as well to promote a reduction of the ignition risk and enhance carbon sequestration by using the chips onsite at a set distance from any structure. And we have finally post-fire native vegetation restoration. If you know anyone who has been impacted by a fire, who needs help and assistance, we have restoration. We can also help with that, so get in touch with us. Those are my contact information, and I'd be happy to answer any question now or as a follow-up through my email. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's stick around. We might have questions, but first let me turn to Mari. Do we have anyone from the public that submitted anything? Would anyone from the public like to speak about this issue?
We have a handout, Mr. Mayor.
Brian Cameron, why don't we bring Brian in? Antoine, we have members of the public who might have questions. So we have one right here for comments. Brian, hello?
I'm sorry. Yes, I wanted actually to speak on item nine, but I always enjoy watching Antoine's presentations. He does a wonderful job and it captures the essence of what we're trying to do so clearly. So I apologize. I meant to ask to speak on item nine.
Okay, that's okay. We accept apologies. We'll just throw you back in the participant pool. Has anyone called in, Mari, on this?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then we'll turn to council questions. Any council members have any questions or comments? Yes, Alicia?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I was just wondering if, I guess it's more for staff, if we can place the link for people to reach out and sign up. It was in the presentation, but people can't click on that. If we can make that link easily accessible for the public.
Good idea. Peter?
Yeah, one comment, one question. The first comment is, I was going to ask the question, but you mentioned it, so thank you for mentioning that you don't share your information with third parties, because I'm sure that people might be concerned about, you know, calling you out there for a free evaluation, and next thing you know, they're being visited by the fire department. And I think that's a very important part of your service, so I just wanted to emphasize that. And the question I get all the time is, what about palm trees? They make such a dramatic fire, but are they really as dangerous as they look?
So, thank you for your question. And yes, so just quickly, we do not share with third parties. That's a strength of the RCD. We are a non-regulatory agency, so we work hand-in-hand with communities to solve those issues. Palm trees can be hazardous type depending on how they're maintained and where they're located. If you're familiar, most of the palm trees have a lot of fibrous material in their crown, and that is what ignite extremely easily. You can have embers flying in there, and once the palm tree ignites, that's a new source of embers. And we've had cases where a house had a vent located right across from the palm tree. The palm tree ignited. The vent was not equipped with the appropriate mesh screen for protection, and the house caught fire because of the embers generated by the palm tree. So they are hazardous vegetation depending on their location.
Okay, next I see Mary Sue.
Hi, Antoine. I wanted to let you know how much I appreciate your presentation, and it's nice to put a face to your name. I know you're getting around quite a bit in Calabasas and sharing this information. I wanted to mention that Brian Cameron, who came on as one of the founders of EPIC, which is Emergency Planning in Calabasas, it's a fire-safe council. If members of the public are interested in getting involved in how to be better prepared for these wildfires, you might look for more information coming soon about EPIC. The timing of this presentation is great. By the end of this week, we will be experiencing our first Santa Ana winds. That cold front that came in earlier in the week wasn't the Santa Anas, but we'll have them by Friday. And so my question, Antoine, I get a lot of people asking me, what are the top three things they can do immediately? And I'd like to know what your response would be.
A lot of it has to do with maintenance. So first thing would be clean your gutters. Make sure you don't have vegetation debris accumulated there. Make sure you don't have, same thing, leaf litter, pine needles around the house where they can ignite, for example, the fence. You want to make sure that there's nothing there that can work the fence long enough to catch it and eventually the fire traveling to the home. For, that's what we can do right now. If you have a little more time, the number one priority, very often what we see on evaluation is upgrading your vents. The recommendation is to have one eighth mesh screen on the vents. Most homes have quarter inch because that's the construction standard to prevent rodent intrusion, but it's not effective against embers.
That's wonderful. I would add one more thing. If people haven't already brought in outdoor patio equipment, cushions, and things like that into their garage, now's the time to do that. But the website that you walked us through, defensiblespace.org, is the best space, the best place right now to get information on what you can do today and as these winds pick up. One question for you. What's the capacity like for RCD to get around a household? A lot of people will take the initiative and will know how to do the simple fixes that you've mentioned, and a lot of people don't have the ability to do this. How, I mean, how can you address an entire city like Calabasas? How would you do that?
This is the next step in what we're trying to achieve. For now, we are at the phase where we do the evaluation, we give recommendations. We don't have, something that many people ask for is a list of contractors, people that are, have been trained and understand the risk of wildfire, and are trained to upgrade vents, are trained to put leaf guards on your gutters. I'm hoping that it's something that we can include in future grant application for the RCD to develop that kind of training for contractors and have a list of the contractors who went through a training about wildfire to be able to offer those services. But it is, for now, it is something we don't have available readily.
Very interesting. Then my last comment. I mean, I could just sit here all day and talk to you. I think what you're doing is fabulous. Volunteers. Could you use retired contractors? Or do you have the capacity to put an army of volunteers together?
We are actively looking for volunteers. We had a training event on October 1st and 2nd where it was a day and a half training with two parts online, one part onsite. And we had people from EPIC, 1% from EPIC attending, and I work with Brian coordinating with them to service Calabasas and offer evaluations. So we are training volunteers, and we are looking for people who are interested to help in their community. So if there's a way to share that message, we'll be happy to get in touch with those people, and they can shadow us when we go on evaluation. We can train them on how to use forms and reports, and we can grow a force that this way.
I think with some social media outreach, we can definitely help you get some more volunteers, so I'm sure the staff that is watching here can help. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
David?
Antoine, thank you again. I won't go over everything, but I appreciate knowing that there is a privacy component and also what was already mentioned about putting this up on our website so people could easily link to it. The only question really I had is if you could confirm, which already know, the source of the funding or the costs incurred for those homeowners who are going to have the evaluations done, either one of the two or three.
Yeah, absolutely. So the evaluations right now are funded through a grant by the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. We have funding to perform about 340, 350 evaluations. We are at 180, so about like halfway through. So we have plenty of evaluation left. For now, they are free because they're funded by the grant. When we run out of the grant funding program, we're hoping to transform that in a program fee service or partner with local governments to continue offering that service, or hopefully include it in future grant applications so that it can remain free.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Antoine Kunch. Sorry, I slightly mispronounced that. I should have done better, but thank you very much. Was there anything else you'd like to say before you go?
No, thank you very much for having me. And yes, people should feel free to check defensiblespace.org. There's a lot of information on there.
Great. We appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, now I understand that we do have a representative from the Chumash Council. So we're going to have a proclamation recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day if we can bring in Beverly Salazar folks. Beverly, okay. Hello, Ms. Folks. You could unmute yourself. Could you introduce yourself, please? I think you're muted still. Are we muting her, Mari, or is?
I'm asking her to unmute, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I don't know if she can do it.
All right.
She can hear you. Oh, there she is. There she is.
There I am. I'm sorry. I don't know what happened. I think I pressed something I wasn't supposed to.
That's okay.
I am Beverly Salazar folks, and I am a Chumash Totaviam elder, and I am a local resident. I've lived in Thousand Oaks for 40 years, and I am honored to be involved in your meeting this evening.
We're honored to have you. I do have a quick question. What is the population now of the Chumash Nation?
Well, the Chumash, oh, I think they're probably about, gosh, that's a good question. I think the last I heard it was like maybe 3,000 to 4,000. But they are actually spread around. It's not all at the local reservation.
Well, I want you to know that this is our first celebration locally in Calabasas of Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I'm honored to be the mayor during that time period. And I know the council has a resolution for you that we all signed. I want to thank the Mayor's Youth Council for helping us with this. We're going to have some activities, maybe at the pumpkin festival. If we can have maybe a representative from the tribe come to the festival, or we're going to also have some literature there. And I'd like to thank Mari Hernandez for helping us out too as the staff person for the Mayor's Youth Council. She was very helpful in doing this. So we have a proclamation I'm going to read, and we have a physical proclamation to give to you. Okay. As Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 11th, 2021. Whereas the city of Calabasas recognizes that the indigenous peoples of the lands that would have become, would later become known as the Americas, have occupied these lands thousands of years beforehand. And whereas the city of Calabasas recognizes that Calabasas is built upon the homelands and villages of the indigenous peoples of this region, the Chumash tribe, who are part of the Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians Nation, without whom the building of the city of Calabasas would not have been possible. And whereas the city of Calabasas values the many contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and likewise values the deep cultural contributions that have substantially shaped the character of the city of Calabasas and our region. And whereas we have a responsibility to oppose the systemic discrimination toward indigenous peoples in the United States, which perpetuates poverty and income inequality and exacerbates disproportionate levels of health, education, and social stability. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be used to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous peoples and to celebrate the thriving culture and value of the Chumash tribe, who are part of the Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians Nation and the other indigenous peoples of our region who contribute to our city. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Calabasas does hereby proclaim October 11th, 2021, as Indigenous Peoples' Day and calls upon public officials, educators, businesses, communities, volunteers, and all the people of Calabasas, California, to observe this day, to honor and celebrate the thriving cultures and positive values of the indigenous peoples of our region. So you have that with our heartfelt thank you for coming and.
Thank you. Thank you. It's an honor. I really appreciate it. It is very exciting to all of us. Thank you very much.
And we have some other things that we're working on, perhaps honoring some, maybe you can help us out later on in honoring some historic figures that we may have a naming opportunity later on for one of our open spaces of land that I think would be wonderful to honor. We don't have any Native American names for any of our parks or any of our facilities or anything. So would you like to say anything else, Beverly?
No, I think that you've said it all, and it's wonderful. I'm just very proud that I can accept this for our people, and I thank you very much for honoring us with this.
Would any other council member like to say anything? Mary Sue?
Beverly, I just also wanted to thank you and show my gratefulness for your culture and looking for ways that we can improve and bring greater awareness of the history.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
It's just an honor for me. I really do appreciate it, and we're very happy that it's come to this. It took a long time, but.
Yes, it did, a few thousand years.
Yes, but at least it's happening. So that's, you know, it's important to me because I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren. So for that generation, I'm very happy. So for that generation, um, I'm very happy.
Well, it's very sad to me that you tell me there's only a few thousand Chumash Indians. I wasn't sure of the exact number. But at one time there were tons of thousands and perhaps.
Oh, yeah. Right. I think a lot of that, though, is basically here in this general area, like in the San Ynez area. Um, a lot of them have, you know, spread out, so there could possibly be more.
Okay. Well, thank you very much and we'll keep in touch.
Thank you. And I'm hoping to see you on Sunday. I'm I'm working on it.
Oh, good. Okay. I hope you can be there. We'll have a place for you and we will definitely have your literature is welcome. And we're gonna estimate no demonstrations at the Pumpkin Festival.
Okay, thank you so much.
Bye bye.
Bye.
We'll move to the next item, which is our sheriff's report. So our crime report is being given by our very own Deputy Mason de Mateo, who I see is in the audience. If we could bring him in. And this would be for August twenty twenty one. Deputy de Mateo, I see you're here. There you are. Okay.
Okay. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I am Deputy De Mateo from the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. I am presenting the crime report for the month of August. Now let's get into it. There were uh two allegations of rape. Uh, for the month of August, I have very limited information regarding those two incidents. One involved uh or one started um at a local restaurant and then ended up at a local hotel. Um, where the allegation occurred. The next incident started at a local bar and then ended at a local residence. Uh, where alcohol was involved and uh that's where the allegation occurred. Uh, both of these incidents are being um investigated by the Sheriff's Special Victims Bureau. So there is no further information uh at this time. Now, we also had one strong arm robbery. Uh, this was more of a domestic incident um involving ex-partners. That turned into a strong arm robbery uh and a burglary among other charges. Uh, we did have six residential burglaries. Of those six burglaries, most of them occurred in the Calabasas Park neighborhood. Um, I looked into those burglaries and they all happened at different times of the day. Um, so there was no specific pattern, um, although all the residences that were burglarized um were vacant. There weren't, there was no one home. There was one burglary to a gra- a garage or an outbuilding. Um, there were six locked vehicles that were burglarized. We did have six grand thefts uh incidents, five petty theft incidents and nine thefts from unlocked vehicles. That's also a big one. I'm not sure what's going on with that. People just need to remind to uh lock their vehicles at the uh at the end of the workday. There were two stolen vehicles um with a total of thirty eight part one crimes. With a increase in twenty percent. In crime. Um, there was one other thing that I wanted to discuss uh in regards to theft. This doesn't apply to the month of August, however, it does apply um to the city for the year. Um, this is catalytic converters. I know there were some questions about this and there's always some concerns about this because it's a hot topic. Um, just for uh the city's insight. As of July first of this year, um, there have been four catalytic converter thefts in the city of Calabasas. Um, Lost Hills Sheriff's Station has hosted a catalytic converter etch uh event. Um, on March fifteenth in Calabasas and April twenty seventh in the in Agora Hills. We'll also have another etch event coming up on October twentieth in Westlake Village. Um, and if you don't know what that is. It is an event uh that gives motorists an opportunity to bring their vehicle into a um to a mechanic. Uh, for free where they etch the vehicle's license plate number onto the catalytic converter. Now, this doesn't prevent your catalytic converter from getting stolen, but it can act as a deterrent because it is now serialized property. It also gives uh law enforcement an avenue to identify victims and prosecute suspects. Upon recovery of these catalytic converters. Uh, in a way to. Also prevent these type of thefts uh because they are costly. They can be several thousand dollars to repair. Um, is to, if you have, if you have the ability to park in a well lit area, please do that. Um, if you are at a residence, uh, security cameras work well and also motion activated floodlights work very well. Uh, we also ask that um the community looks uh, people in the community to look out for their neighbors. That's all I have for you today. Uh, do you guys have any questions?
Are there any questions from the council? Comments. Did Mari, is there any question from the public?
There's no hand, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I see Mary Sue's raising her hand. Okay.
Hi Deputy De Mateo, I have a quick question. I've heard about cages that can be installed around catalytic converters. Are those um helpful for car owners?
It is an option. Um, however, some of those cages have to be welded to your vehicle. So it's kind of an issue for some people. Um, I know there are products out there that can affix to your catalytic converter without being welded. Um, but an experienced criminal can get through that pretty quick. All it does is slow him down for a few extra seconds. Um, it's it's very tough to combat these catalytic converter thefts. Um, but you you just have to do what's best for you. And if you can park in a secured area. Perfect. If you can't, um, not everyone has that luxury. Just if you can park near a well lit area, it's probably the best because they usually, this usually happens uh in the middle of the night. Where no one can see them and when everyone's asleep.
And what are the top cars? The top three cars?
Yeah, the top three cars. Um, we're gonna have Prius is number one.
Yeah.
Um, Prius has, it it is an electric car, but it does have a catalytic converter. And uh thieves do get the most money for that catalytic converter. Uh, the next one is going to be pickup trucks such as Toyota Tsukomas. And then the next one, a popular one seems to be older between two thousand seven and two thousand ten Honda Accords.
Thank you.
No problem.
Alicia.
I just want to say thank you for everything that you continue to do for our community. Much appreciated.
David.
I also want to say thank you to you and everyone who worked so hard uh on behalf of the city. Could you either provide us a link uh so we could put it on our city site? Or let us know the time and location for the etch event in Westlake Village for anyone in our community who would like to take advantage of that opportunity?
Absolutely. Um, I I have sent an email out um to representatives of the city. I will make sure that that gets um to uh the council.
Thank you very much. Again, thanks for everything.
Yes, great.
Thank you for that. Uh, I also just wanted to ask one more. Is the etch event free, I assume?
The etch event is free. So when the Sheriff's Department hosts it at a local mechanic shop, that day is free. Um, you, what you have to do is contact the Sheriff's Station to reserve a spot. They do one vehicle every fifteen minutes. This event in Westlake Village is full. So every fifteen minutes for eight hours is full. Um, it's a pretty popular event. And uh, yes, it is free. However, the mechanic shop will begin to um provide that service. At the conclusion of the free event for a minimal fee.
Okay, thank you.
Alicia, did you have something else?
No, I was just gonna add, I thought I read that it was full, but um you confirmed that. Also, just it's. The Lost Hills Sheriff's Station posts a lot of this on their social media, so it would be great for our residents to follow them as well. Cause they post this right when it becomes active, so people can sign up as well.
Great. Thank you Deputy de Mateo once again. We appreciate your presence.
Thank you.
And we'll probably see you at the Pumpkin Festival, won't we?
Uh, I don't know if I'll be there. I know there will be deputies there. I don't know if I will be there specifically.
Yeah, but on your day off, aren't you gonna wanna come and join us at the Festival? Okay.
We'll see.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, now turn to council member uh announcements. Uh, Mary Sue.
I just have a quick announcement. I'm so excited that on October seven. The state of Calabasas switched its default to one hundred percent renewable clean energy. So homes that are with the Clean Power Alliance and businesses. Um, you should, you should feel very proud about your contributions to reducing on greenhouse gas. Just almost overnight, uh, electrical use is one of the top um causes of of greenhouse gases. And if you want information on um on opting out or down, I'll 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 first say that. It is slightly more expensive. It's about three dollars and fifty cents per one hundred dollars of your bill. Um, that seems like a pretty manageable uh amount, um, considering the good that it will create. But certainly on our website, Clean Power uh Alliance on our city website, you can find more information on how to opt out. Um, if you want to go to um, you know, non-renewable fossil fuels, uh, our opt down and do a mixture. And the second thing I want to announce about Clean Power Alliance, our renewable energy source, um. Clean Power Alliance and Edison, uh Edison who delivers the power, but also has a very large base outside of. The city of Calabasas will be moving to a time of use rate from four to nine P M. It will be more expensive um if you're using your dishwasher or washing clothes. Or have the um air conditioning powered up. So there's more information that'll be coming. And there will be kind of a a gradual uh transition to that time of use, which is. Uh, pretty standard for energy providers and we'll be looking at moving over to that. Um, I believe, I believe by the end of this year, um, there'll be more information to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, announcements?
Uh, thank you. Uh, just a reminder to everybody that uh we are still in the tail end of a pandemic. Hopefully ending uh in the next month, six months or a year, I hope. Uh, until then, we need to be sure we stay vigilant here and a mask mandate is still in place. There's plenty of places where we are gathering together in safe uh fashion though, and one of those is the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce. Uh, there is an in-person networking breakfast uh that has begun again. Uh, it's being held at Peddler's Fork. Uh, it happens to be tomorrow morning. So if you haven't registered yet, you can check out uh the calabassaschamber.com. And uh they are practicing social distancing and uh checking for vaccines or COVID tests. Uh, before you uh attend the event as well. So it's a good safe place to gather. And if you're interested in more details, check out uh calabassaschamber.com.
David.
Thank you. Um, also want to take a moment to congratulate our city of staff. I think we had. If I'm correct, about five to six hundred shots uh free at their free walk-in flu clinic last weekend. And it was uh necessary, important, good to see everyone there and done very safely and under the COVID protocols in place. Uh, wanted to announce also that our environmental commission, along with our city, are having their annual recycling drawing contest. Deadline to apply is November twenty fourth, two thousand twenty one. And this year, for the first time ever, the theme is going to be reduce and recycle food waste. And it ends up being our city calendar. A lot of the elementary students in our school are recognized and honored. And please take a look at our city site for that. I will also want to congratulate our city and the Calabasas Film Festival, uh, the eighth annual, which concluded last week. And really was a a big success, again, complying with uh COVID protocols. Some good movies, even an outdoor movie at the Tennis and Swim Center as well. And congratulations to Mayor Bizagin for a State of the City address. Well, very well done and well received. Uh, this past week as well. Lots of congratulations. I'll congratulate our very own school superintendent, Dan Stepanowski, for receiving the honor. Of the Los Angeles County Superintendent of the Year for the entire county. That has never been done before, as far as I'm aware in our our city, and that is a tremendous honor. And uh I will leave the other events for other council members. Thanks very much.
Okay, Alicia.
Okay, um, I have two quick uh, two quick announcements. One, on October twenty third. The city of Calabasas will be hosting a COVID nineteen vaccination clinic from nine thirty to twelve in Founder's Hall. Pfizer doses will be available and there's information on our website that you can um register online. So that will take place on October twenty third from nine thirty to twelve. Also, on October twenty third, the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station will be having a safe and secure document destruction event. And that's taking place from nine to two. You can bring up to uh five boxes of personal papers for shredding. So that's an event that's always really well received and people in the community appreciate. So lots to do on October twenty third to keep yourself safe and to um safely destroy your personal documents.
Great, thank you. And I also want to thank our staff for the uh State of the City. That was uh kind of challenging this year to do, you know, with with all the safety protocols in place. But it, I I think it went off uh very well and I appreciate the staff's work on it, especially the communications department. Um, I want to thank the city of Hidden Hills. We have a little picture to show you, our annual float road once again. And there we are in the Hidden Hills Parade, celebrating Hidden Hills sixtieth anniversary. Um, that was last Saturday. So we are happy to be part of the resumption of that uh annual tradition. Um, and of course, this Sunday, October twel- seventeen is the Calabasas Pumpkin Festival. It's a longstanding tradition, long predating cityhood, about fifty years old. And it will be from ten A M to five P M at One Danza Park. There is a ten dollar charge for tickets. And safety protocols will be in effect. Um, there was pre-ticket sales, but if you didn't get your tickets ahead of time, you can purchase them at the at the door. And uh we look forward to the return of this. Unfortunately, we were not able to do it last year. But uh we're doing it one day this year. So that is all I have for announcements. And we'll move on to the next item, which is public comment. Any person wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, not on the agenda, may do so at this time. It must be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. And you will have three minutes or less to speak. If you could state your name and city of residence or organization you represent. That would be greatly appreciated. So I see one hand, Zachary Rossoff. So we'll bring in Zachary into here. With a big Z.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Um, good evening, Mayor Bizagin and council members. My name is Zachary Rossoff and I'm a senior at Calabasas. Hi. I've met many of you through my work in the city. I'm a student environmental commissioner and the secretary of the Mayor's Youth Council. Which provided me the opportunity to deliver the pledge of allegiance last week at Mayor Bizagin's State of the City address. I'm also the city clerk intern at City Hall. I'm speaking tonight about rodenticides, a grave environmental threat to our community. Commonly known as rat poison, rodenticides often get passed up the food chain when poisoned rodents are eaten by other animals. Killing local wildlife, including our mountain lions, owls and hawks, and even pets. Although terrible for the environment, rodenticides are used all throughout our city and can be found in large quantities, especially at commercial centers. Where the need for rodenticides is exacerbated by trash can malpractice. I believe Ms. Hernandez sent you all photos that I took at shopping centers throughout our city. The Commons has been notoriously bad at properly disposing of its trash, as have the courtyard at the Commons, the Gelson Shopping Center and other centers. As you can see, the dumpsters in the city are left open and overflowing, which not only leads to greater number of rodents. But also can have adverse health consequences. And of course, the use of rodenticides directly correlates with trash can malpractice. At the Commons, I counted dozens, possibly more than a hundred bait boxes. And as the pictures with the red circles show, all the shopping centers are high utilizers of rodenticides. Although legislation banning the use of rodenticides is near impossible, I have a solution intended to limit their use. Based on a similar ordinance that our neighbor Malibu adopted in twenty twenty, the lidlock amendment would be an amendment to chapter eight point one six. Of our city's municipal code, the section that details the collection of waste. This revision is simple but effective. The lidlock amendment would require commercial centers to use dumpsters with locking bars. Which are already offered under our current waste management contract. The only difference would be that locking bars would be mandatory. A lock bar would serve as a reminder to shut the dumpsters after disposing of waste, which would hopefully curb the rodent problem. As it would reduce the food source for rodents, thereby reducing the rodent population and the use of rodenticides. I've already spoken to Mayor Bizagin, Mr. Alex Farsadi and my fellow environmental commissioners about this initiative. And they've all been very supportive, recognizing that the rodenticide issue cannot be ignored. It's absolutely vital that we move forward in the fight against rodenticides to refine Calabasas's environmental image and to promote public health. I would love to talk more about this initiative, either as an agenda item in a future city council meeting or one-on-one. Thank you so much for your time and I look forward to speaking with you all soon.
Thank you, Zachary. Perfect timing. Okay. Um. Do we have anybody who's called in, Mari?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else in the, uh, in the virtual audience? You need to raise your hand now if you'd like to speak on an un-agendized item. I have one that's Zoom user. I don't know. Okay, we'll bring the person in. They can give their name and city of residence. I don't have a name.
Uh, good evening, Mayor. Uh, my name is Martin Glatt from Creekside. Calabasas. And thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Uh, this evening I was looking at the. Check register that's attached to the. Agenda for this evening. And I was concerned. About the over one hundred thousand dollars. Of legal fees. The city has paid out. During about the last thirty days, which is represented. In the check register. And my concern is what internal controls. Does the city employ? And dispersing legal fees to outside. And whether or not any of the. Legal costs is on a pre-bid basis. And I believe maybe about five years ago, I suggested. To the city council at that time. Whether or not any survey or analysis. Was made to determine. Whether or not it would be best to bring. In-house. Legal staff to offset. The outside. Legal cost. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martin. Okay, any other people in the audience? You need to raise your hand now. I don't see anybody. So we will move on in the agenda to the consent agenda, which consists of five items. Would any council members like to take off any of the items? David, what item?
Just for a comment, item two, please.
Okay. Uh, any other items, Alicia?
Item three.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, David, did you want to, just a quick comment, or do you want a discussion?
Just a quick comment.
Okay.
And it's on item two, which is our annual. A resolution recognizing October's bullying prevention month in the city of Calabas. I'm very proud of our city. For continuing to, uh, take a leadership role in this regard, uh, any type of bullying or. Negative behavior, which may start at a young age, continues often all the way through adulthood and. Anything we can do throughout our city to prevent that and support those who are working to prevent it. I, uh, applaud. Thank you.
Okay, Alicia, wha- what would you like to say about item three or comments?
Let's see, I'm pulling up. The item, let's see. I just wanted to know if staff could discuss what our city administrative costs are in these agreements.
Could we bring in the staff, uh, who would be like Robert, maybe?
Or if it's fine.
Robert or Heather.
Or is it Ron?
Um. Well, let's bring in Robert and Heather first, and if they, and I, I don't know if this is a wrong question or not.
Mayor Bizagin, I also have a question on number three, when the time is right.
Okay, I, I see your hand. Okay, what was the question, Alicia?
Um.
You're muted again.
Sorry, what the city's administrative costs are and how are they set in these contracts?
Finance, uh, you would have to speak with Ron about that. He comes up with the percentage.
Okay, can we bring Ron in? And keep, keep Robert and Heather here in case there are other questions.
Do you want me to proceed with my couple of questions?
Are they for Robert?
Yes, uh-huh. I don't. Um. Prevailing wages, um, I have a question that, um, there's a penalty of fifty dollars a day per worker if they're not. Hired under prevailing wages. Have we ever had a circumstance where this has happened?
The only circumstance I know of is when we had a company, I believe it was five years ago. Uh, the, the owner of the company suddenly passed away. And the. Crews or the. Individuals that worked for that company came to city hall requesting pay. I believe there was an investigation, however. Uh, we were eliminated from it. And, um, it did go to the state labor board, but I believe it was resolved at that level.
So it's, it, it sounds like it's labor referred tips. We don't have, or do we have a mechanism to check from time to time?
Uh, at the state level, at any time, we can request the payroll.
Okay.
Or we can request the payroll as well.
What was that, Robert?
We do randomly ask for certified payroll.
Okay.
And the, I have not seen any violation as long as I have done random check.
Good. And then my last question, it might be for you to, or, um, for our city attorney. We. Were asked to reduce water usage fifteen percent throughout the city residents, businesses, the city. But I don't know how or if we can do that with, with our L M Ds. Um, or if it would take. Um, an ordinance. Does.
The city can, working together with the, uh, L M D partners reduces water usage. We wouldn't need a new ordinance to do it voluntarily. With the landscaping within the city's control. Um. And I'll, I'll look to Robert to speak to the operational component of how to do that. But the existing authority to do it is within the current energy power.
So within these contracts that are in front of us, we could add something about. Reducing water use for fifteen.
Yeah, line could be added that the, um, uh, landscaping companies. Venco Western and American Heritage will, uh, comply with all water usage reductions imposed by. Um, the Los Angeles Municipal Water District. That could certainly be added.
Well, I can add into that, um, Heather took initiation. Edgar, starting today. Is going around and checking all our water metering, their control and reducing the amount of water by fifteen percent. So that is something is under our control and we are monitoring that. And also we had opportunity per Kindon's direction. To take some initiation and we have a pamphlet ready we're gonna hand out during Pumpkin Festival. And also Heather has initiated. Planting. Low water usage planting material. I let Heather talk about that. And report was forwarded to Kindon, unfortunately was late on the day. I'm not sure if he had a chance to send it to the council. But on our website now we have direct link. I asked Michael Russo to move that to the front page, so it gets more attention. Heather, anything else you want to add to this?
No, I think you've covered it all, and I think the new designs are. Um, mostly all water reducing and they. Are almost using most, or if not similar plant material that was done on the Valmar medians that have zero irrigation.
Excellent. And lastly, as you all know, we have a smart. Meters and also they do measure the. Content of the moisture in the soil. We verify all of those that they are functioning properly. And hopefully by next week I will have a full report of our fifteen percent voluntary reduction. Without impacting any kind of landscape. So we will be, uh, above volunteering. We are doing.
So if I can repeat what you've just said very briefly, um. As far as the L M Ds go, you have a new low water. Use pallet of plants that you have put together. And it's on our website?
Heather can answer that. We are using the water district, uh, pallet plants. And, uh, again, we cannot enforce it to the homeowner associations, but we can do it in our own parks and new streetscapes.
Okay, so can we add something to these contracts that states we strong, and you know, to conserve water, we strongly recommend. That you, you know, use. Um, the. The water districts, low water use plant.
We definitely can do that and also. Our own staff can control the water metering, as I said, Edgar.
No, I, I know you, you said that, but you really can't reduce the water, if you've got high, you know. High-use water plants, you're gonna kill them. So we need to make sure that. There's a change in the pallet or recommend a change in the pallet. I think you, 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 you can, you, you hear what I'm getting at. I'd like to see it in the contract of recommendation. For, um, using low water use plants and. Abiding by the city's, you know, recommending that you follow the city's guidelines for. Um, any type of water use reduction, which we have not. Um, I mean, we haven't. To my knowledge, we haven't said to the public, we even, you know, please reduce your water by fifteen percent. The city. Would like you to do that. But if we did, it would be nice if the L M Ds would, would comply.
I will look into it with Heather's help and our water district. We can put something together.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Ron, go ahead.
Ac- actually, most of the landscape chairs and boards of directors. Have already started implementing that. We have. Calabasas Park Estates is about to begin. Um, Oak Park condos have already started. Um, Las Villas is already starting. Um, so I already have design work that I'm doing with their volunteers. Right now at those three locations. And many of the landscape chairs are very active about doing that. Um, and so they've already started the process and I believe Vista Point is about to begin.
That's great. I, I'd still like to see it kind of memorialized somewhere because when I look around my city. I see lush green. Open spaces and flowers that are replaced, you know, every few months. Um. So I think it, it, it couldn't hurt. But thank you for that work, all that work, both of you.
We have Ron here. Um, Alicia, why don't we, um. Did Ron, did you hear Alicia's question?
Yes, I did, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Weintraub, the, uh, admin costs. That are charged to the HOAs are unrelated to these contracts. The administrative costs are, uh, direct. Staff and benefits and salary of the staff that are directly working on the L M Ds. And on the HOAs for all the landscaping and those are parceled out, uh, to each HOA based on. Um, basically based on their revenue budget that, that they have as we have the cost. Of our, uh, city staff that are working on it. So it's not something that is added above. Any contract or any service. It's our direct salary and benefit charges of city staff that work on L M Ds.
So it has nothing to do with what we're approving tonight?
Correct. It has nothing to do with what you, as the city council, are approving this evening.
And then just are the city admin costs, do they fluctuate from year to year, or do the HOAs? Can they budget? Do they, I guess my question is, do they, do they have a range of what they possibly could be?
There is no range of what they, uh, can be. They are, again, the direct salary and benefit costs of the city staff. So they generally increase every year as staff costs increase, as. Medical insurance increases, as our purse pension costs increase, as all those benefit costs increases for city staff. That's what is causing the, the rise in the administrative costs that are charged, uh, to the HOAs.
Okay, I guess since it's not really a part of our agenda item tonight, possibly something that. Um, we could look into just making sure that our HOAs understand this and are aware of this and how it's budgeted.
Yes.
Ron, one quick follow-up question. Have we always charged the HOAs, um, the salary administrative fees?
We've been doing it for a number of years. I can't answer as to always, but I've. Done some analysis on the last ten years and I've always seen the admin costs there for the last ten years. I can't speak. To prior to that.
Thank you.
I can speak to that, yes. Every year we do charge. Originally was about three percent. Now that we are calculating, it just varies. Based on a different. Area and what we are doing and, uh, we will have a letter going out. We had a meeting with Kindon and Ron and Heather. Looking at that, looking at exactly what it will be, and we're gonna have letter explanation to each HOA send pretty soon with Ron's help.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I saw Peter's hand up. Peter, did you have a question?
Ron and Robert covered it brilliantly. Thank you.
Okay. So Mari, are there any members of the public who've called in? I don't see any hands. Any members of the public wishing to comment on any of these five items?
There is not, there's none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to, um, uh, approval. So if there's a motion to approve all of these items?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Kraut.
Yes.
Councilmember Shapiro.
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Yes.
Mayor Putnamauer.
Hi. Mayor Bizagin.
I.
Carrie Sackser.
Now we're having a, uh, public hearing. We'll move on to item six. This is a public hearing for consideration of the following matter. Consideration of City Council Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen fifty-five. To recertify the environmental impact report. Final environmental impact report or E I R. And to re-adopt the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine housing element. Update and associated land use element updates to the Calabasas twenty thirty general plan. Consistent with statutory requirements, California Housing Element Law. And two, consideration by the city council of adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash three ninety-five. Amending title seventeen of the Calabasas Municipal Code. To add an affordable housing overlay zone and associated development standards. For qualifying housing development projects, amending other sections within title seventeen of this. Calabasas Municipal Code as necessary to be consistent with the added new sections and updating the official zoning map. All as necessary to conform with the general plan housing element and related updates. That was all one sentence, by the way. As their September, at their September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one public hearing, the planning commission recommended to the city council certification of the final E I R. Adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine housing element update and associated updates to the land use element. And adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash three ninety-five. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. An environmental impact report or E I R has been prepared and circulated in compliance with SEQA and the SEQA guidelines. Has the proof of posting and publication been filed for this public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we receive correspondence and will distribute and post it accordingly.
Public hearing is now open. We had a. Staff report last time. I see no, unless somebody else would like to hear the staff report again. I see no reason to redo the staff report, but our staff is available if you have any questions. Um. Any changes to the staff reports since the last time I was here, Tom?
There aren't really any changes, but I do want to point out to the council, anybody else who's watching and paying attention, of course, that. Um, we did get contacted by the county sanitation district. Just advising us that in our responses to comments, we had forgotten to point out that they serve among everybody else. They serve. The city of Hidden Hills. So we are making a matter of record by my statement now. That of course the sanitation district serves the city of Hidden Hills in addition to us and Malibu and Agoura Hills, et cetera. Um, secondly, as the council members know from materials we've already. Um, secondly, as the council members know from materials we've already distributed earlier this week. We did get one written letter that came in after the last hearing from a group known as YMB Law and we provided a response to comments to that organization and were prepared to answer any questions about that. The key point there is nothing in that letter um, warrants any kind of change whatsoever to what was already be considered by the council and what the council is considering now.
Okay, uh, I see Karen Warner has joined us.
Yeah, thank you. And I will point out that she's still with us and the team from Rincon is also available to answer questions about the EAR in case anything comes up. That includes Rema Chakra, Emily Green, Deanna Hanson, and also their subcontractor for transportation planning and environmental impacts related to that. From Fair and Peers, that's Sarah Brandonberg, and of course, Michael Klein's here and Maureen and myself.
Okay, I'm assuming that there's nothing to add from the last time this was here from any of the individuals named. If you do have something to add, please let me know and we can certainly do it. Now I'm gonna turn to members of the public before we go to the council. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on this item? Any call-ins, Mari?
We have no one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then I'll turn to council comments and questions. Are there any council comments or questions? I don't see any, so I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty One Dash Seventeen Fifty Five. And Twenty Twenty One Dash Three Ninety Five, which we can do in one, um, in, in one uh, motion, correct, Matt?
Yes, that is correct. One motion works for the full item.
Mr. Mayor, are you closing the public hearing as well?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm closing the public hearing. So would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut.
Hi.
Councilmember Shapiro.
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Yes.
Mayor Potemaur.
Yes.
Mayor Bosajin.
Bye.
Carrie Sackser, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Would anybody like to take a break or should we continue to the next item? Okay, we'll continue if I don't hear anything. So we will move on to item number seven, which is approval of amendments to the city's adopted story poll procedures. I know there is a staff report. Uh, Glenn Mickich, where is he? He's presenting. There you are, Glenn. If we could bring him in.
Thomas also presented, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay.
So we need to bring Tom back.
Okay, bring Tom back. Okay, so Glenn is here and Tom is coming in.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes. Tom, okay. So, um, do you wanna take us through? Now, I know your report kinda did it nicely where you took the main changes, not all the type. I saw there were some typographical ones and all that. Do you have a PowerPoint or you just wanna summarize your report?
I, I don't have a PowerPoint. I'll just summarize the report. Um, initially, the item came up because one of our planning commissioners um, noticed that uh, there was a problem with visibility of uh, some of the depictions of the roof lines and the material that was being used for them. Um, so we brought it to planning commission to uh, discuss further. That turned into three meetings. And at the conclusion of the third meeting, they forwarded a recommendation that's before you today. Um, just briefly, again, the, the main substantive changes that came out of those meetings were basically stronger language and a mandate to use the orange mesh netting period. Um, we did however, leave a little bit of a, um, a possibility for safety. If there's some licensed professionals that, that would, and the director would make the determination in this case, but the licensed professional is saying that it's not a good idea to use that for wind loading reasons or whatnot, then uh, uh, we could use a different material to depict the roof lines. Um, that's all contained in the construction methods and materials section of the story poll policy. Um, the second substantive change that came out of that was really this idea that, um, and originally the policy only required commercial developments that put up story polls to have to put a sign up with a rendering on it. And we kind of expanded that um, to, to all, all developments that needed to put up story polls to also put up a sign with a rendering. Um, and the, the rationale behind that was really that um, these renderings and the signs are actually helpful to people. Um, and why only do to, do it for the commercial projects? Why not every time story polls go up to, to give a, a better picture, a bet- better picture to the public for them to be able to see and, and visualize what's gonna go on the site. So those are really the only two changes. Um, we're, we're open to any other recommendations that have come along. I know uh, there's some members of the public that had some concerns that have come up. Um, I'll briefly address one of the main ones that we saw, which are um, under the story poll determination factors. So the the story poll policy allows the director to take into consideration. Uh, I believe it's six different things, um, when considering if story polls can go up or all the story polls can go up, or if there's some that that can't go up for various reasons. And the one that was brought up was um, excessive cost or financial impact. I just wanted to point out that's not a, a change that was with the original adopted story poll policy. We're not recommending to change it at this point. Uh, we're open. If you wanna strike it, you can. We've never really used the financial um, factor ever to, to uh, not require someone to put up story polls. So I don't, we don't really think that it's something that we would use. Um, I believe it was a consideration initially if a homeowner that, let's say, didn't have enough money um, and, and maybe couldn't put up a story poll, if there was a true financial consideration that we would think of the, the, the John Q. Public Homeowner um, as opposed to a larger commercial or multifamily development or whatnot. Um, and I, I think that's why that, that one in there, but you know, it hasn't been used before in the past. We don't really expect it to be used in the future. Um, but uh, we're open to, again, any, any suggestions you guys might have. So, um, I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that for now. Um, I can answer questions about some other topics that might have come up or anything you're on your guys' mind about this and uh, thank you very much and I'll answer any questions you have.
Okay, well first, we're gonna turn to the public and I'll ask the public if there's anyone who would like to speak in public comment. Please use the raise hand function now, because we're gonna take public comment at this time. Meanwhile, Mari, has anybody called in?
No, Mr. Mayor, and I do not see any hands up either.
Okay, I don't see any hands up, so when we're done, we make one more call for it and then we're going to turn to council member comments and we're gonna close the uh, public input part. All right, so council members, any council member comments on this? Mary Sue?
Oh, um, well, first of all, I expected a PowerPoint, even if it was a short PowerPoint. I think that when we don't have a PowerPoint, um, we make assumptions that the public knows what we're talking about and that's not always the case. So um, I just, I wish we would come up with some kind of policy to always um, have a PowerPoint, even if it's brief for the public's benefit, assuming they don't know anything about the topic. Um, so a couple, a couple of things, um. I support using the bright orange mesh. I, um, support renderings of, of all buildings. I think that's great. Number three is vague to me, um, and this is where a slide or two could have quickly hit on, um, per other proposed amendments uh, to improve the clarity and readability of the document. I mean, can you expand on that for the public's benefit?
Um, the, the clarifications mostly came out of Commissioner Mueller. Um, who is our resident judge and attorney and read over the document and um, his mind, legal mind went to work and started to wordsmith uh, the readability of things. So they were, they were numerous and it's kinda why we didn't really include it in a PowerPoint. Um, when, when, you know, shoulds were changed to shalls and uh, um, I know one, uh, one of the uh, examples that I could give you right now are, and it has to do with this, uh, this, um, factor of, of an excessive cost uh, for a, a factor in determining whether story polls go up. The original policy that was adopted by council said excessive cost or financial impact as a factor to be considered. We changed that and, um, to say potentially excessive costs or unreasonable financial impact of designing, installing and maintaining story polls for the subject property. Um, and that's just more descriptive than what was there before. Financial cost, excessive cost or financial impact, much shorter statement. Um, potentially excessive costs or unreasonable financial impact of designing, installing and maintaining story polls for the subject property says the exact same thing, just a little bit more descriptively and clearly.
And, I mean, I guess to defend Commissioner Mueller. He's trying to get to the specifics, which is you've got a proposal for story polls. They haven't been erected yet and somebody's asking for relief in advance. So I think that's why he was trying to get more precise with that language.
So I, if you're, if you're changing language to make things more readable, that's all you have to tell me. That would be the bullet. Um, but of course, the details are redlined and available for the public to see. Um, my last comment is, I I would like to strike, um, that if we have not found an inst- instance where anyone has asked for it. It seems like by changing the language, we've broadened the net so that there's more opportunities for people to say, I can't do all that. I can't keep it up. I can't maintain it, um, even though it may be months of a hearing if it's a bigger project. So, um, that's the only change I would recommend to my colleagues is that we, we strike this, this opportunity uh, to not put up story polls because of potential costs in the long run. Thank you.
Okay, we'll keep that in mind, uh, when the motion's made. You, perhaps you can re- revisit that. Anyone else with comments? Alicia?
Just have a quick question. On item number two, where it talks about, um, requiring placement of a sign displaying the rendering, does that also require a website for the project?
Um, not according to story poll policy. Um, we do have project pages for projects that when story polls are placed, we will post the rendering on the website for those projects, but let's say you have a home in the Highlands and they're adding on over five hundred square feet and they're gonna have to put up some story polls. A project like that wouldn't get a, um, a project page of its own. It's fairly small. Um, and probably not of too much particular interest to a wider group of the public. Um, but a, um, a larger project certainly would.
So I think that if there's a way that for large, for projects over a certain size, that there should be a website listed on the sign under number two.
Is that it?
Is that what?
Are you, are you done?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? On the signs, do we put, you know how we have, um, a sign up if you're interested in a certain project? If you wanna sign up to get notices for this project, go here. Are we still doing project interest lists? Or did we stop that? I haven't seen one. I haven't looked for one.
We definitely maintain project interest lists for every project. Anybody who contacts us with an interest in a project gets added to that list. I'm gathering from the question that was asked is whether we could also include on a sign the website that somebody could log on to, to add their names to that list. And I think that's an excellent idea. We can easily do that.
I thought, I thought Alicia was talking about the project's own website, the developer's website. Is that what you were?
I, no, it, it could be, but just that people need to even know how to get to that website. So I think not everyone's going to the city, um, the city project page, but since if we're gonna have these signs with the rendering, like I would just want there to be like contact information or something on the sign as well.
If I may jump in here.
Yeah.
The existing community development forum guidelines requires for certain larger projects that there be a website established by the developer that includes content information for a rep. And so the, the, here, the story poll policies will dovetail with that. Any project that's required to do a forum is required to have a website maintained by the developer with project info. And that website would be required to be listed on the story poll, um, notification rendering on the front of the site. So that may meet the need there and recall that the, the requirement for forums is triggered for a project that involves general plan amendment, development plan amendment, zone change, development agreement, variance. Um, over ten thousand square foot or track maps uh, with accepting exceptions for any single family home. So that might meet the need. We could expand the requirement for a website, but that I think is gonna already trigger in the ones that are at issue.
If I can jump in and clarify further, under notification at the end of the ordinance here. It says, uh, the sign shall include contact information for the city's project planner and if applicable, any website information about the proposed project prepared by the city and or applicant. So if the website, if the applicant has a website, their website would go there. And if the applicant doesn't have a website, as I read it, the city's project page would go there.
And my point is covered already. I just wanna make sure we make that happen.
So that's, that's not my question. My question-
And I support where, I support where you're going with it.
Yeah, it is, we had, we had an option on our city website to sign up to get notices for projects or commission meetings or whatnot. I'm assuming that's still active because on it would be those large projects. So I would get notified of every commission meeting, every review of it. Um, not just going there to get information about the size and, and where it's at, but just, so that's my question. I don't know if Mike was on.
That is absolutely still going on, absolutely.
Great. It, it's just how can you drive people to that website to get public notices? If you want public notices about this project, go here.
That was, that was my point about i- if you want, we can add that as a requirement for a sign.
Perfect. Well, I, I think it's a great idea to have people automatically be notified when there's a hearing. However you do it.
Okay, are there any further questions or comments? Then I, I would, oh, Peter?
Yeah, I just wanna weigh in if I can, just uh, because we did have some comments from the public. I did read the redline version beginning to end and uh, it has Commissioner Mueller's signature all over it. Uh, it's very well done and it does accomplish what the planning commissioner has been talking about for years, which is to get the orange netting that's much more visible and shows the outline of the proposed structure so that people on the sidewalk can see what's, what's going to be there. Um, there's been a number of concerns about the, uh, you know, the, the financial clause being used here. And I think what we have to do is, is trust our community development director uh, to exercise that clause, uh, correctly. And when we have a project where uh, there's twenty feet of fill going in plus a fifty foot tall building and there's a seventy foot tall story pole and I would hope that the developer would acknowledge that there's a significant financial cost to putting up story poles and the complexity of the project doesn't become their exclusion. So I think we have a great staff here and we just need to, uh, uh, allow them to manage that process, uh, as, as they, they do so brilliantly already. Um, and I think there's enough checks and balances in here that we can enforce the story poll ordinance. So I'm really excited to see this. And I just wanted to let the public know that we have seen your comments and we've gone through the documents and I think we're very well covered.
Okay, um, all right then. I know Mary Sue had one amendment and so you wanna make the motion, Mary Sue?
Yeah, so let me just, let me just put it into context. I was part of the original council that created this story poll ordinance and the intent of this ordinance was to give decision makers like the commissioners, like the council and for members of the public to visually see what the impact would be. Um, that was, its primary intent was for us decision makers and to provide, um, And to provide, and, and it hasn't been triggered. And that tells me that anyone putting up a building that, that has to put up story poles will do it. Makes me really nervous. Not only that we still maintain a financial, well, if you can't afford it, you don't have to do it. That impacts my decision making. It impacts the commissioners and it impacts the publics. And so, and the fact that it was, it's been actually, not only is it more descriptive, it's kind of bigger. Well, geez, you have to do all these things to keep those poles up and, and, and looking good. Or, or you can ask for a waiver and, you know, and get out. So I would, I would move this, but, but ask my colleagues to consider that we must have this information in order to make the best decisions as do the planning commission.
Hey, I, I think we need some more specific language. What?
It was striking that, that option.
Okay.
People not to put up story poles.
Okay.
On the financial impact. So. That's my-
And, and my understanding, Matt, is that someone could always come to the city and ask for a waiver anyways, right?
As this is underlying a zoning code requirement, they could always do a variance process. Get out of it or just ask the planning commission for a waiver.
Right. Okay, so Mary Sue. What?
I was going to add, striking that would take it away from the director as an option. And I will note, of course, that the director's decision to reduce the story poll requirement still goes to planning commission in certain cases, depending on the scope of the, the scope of the waiver. But that said, no legal concerns with the strike of subsection F.
Okay, so Mary Sue's moved the, the amendments with the striking as indicated of that one clause. Is there a second?
I'd like to have discussion on that really quick if I could.
Okay, so you're going to second it for purposes of discussion? Okay, go ahead, Peter. What was your question?
So Mary Sue, I, I understand where you're going and it might not be a bad idea. What I've seen on the planning commission is the other clauses being used as often as the financial one. That the financial one, I would imagine would be more appropriate for a homeowner doing a hundred, you know, or 501 square foot addition to their home. Whereas the ones that I saw on the planning commission was a developer who laid out his story poles with all the guy wires at 120 degrees apart and showed that they were all interfering with active parking spaces and needed to ditch the story poles because they were interfering with parking spaces. And when he was asked to rotate the guy wires, first, you know, he claimed that that was not feasible. He didn't know how to do that. So there was a number of conditions that I witnessed on the planning commission there. Structure height, like I mentioned before, safety. These are the things that were often cited for the variances as opposed to financial issues. And so if you want to look at taking that away from the development director and bringing that to the planning commission as the deciding body, you might consider striking all of that because that's where the exceptions are typically made, not financial.
That's a really great suggestion. I didn't realize so many other options were triggered as well. So I would amend my motion to, unless, and we could talk about it, I guess, first, other people.
Why don't you put your motion on the table, whatever you want to be the final motion, then we'll talk about it.
So my motion is to approve the recommendation with the amendment to strike the options for, I don't know, Matt, help me here. Strike the options for not having the story poles. How are you going on?
It would be strike the paragraph titled story poll feasibility determination. And when you strike that, then automatically any variance would have to come before the planning commission.
And my only comment would be, it would leave it open to the, if we struck the entire paragraph, story poll feasibility determination and the six factors, then what's left-
Sorry, what page, where are you guys looking? I just want to make sure I'm following. What page?
So I'm, I'm running off the red line, which is item seven, attachment B. Page four is story poll feasibility determination. And it continues on to the next page, page five. And I'm running off the red line because it shows me the new and the old together. The, if we struck the entirety of story poll feasibility determination, then the director could not approve less than full story poles, would fall to the planning commission. And then the, what would be left would be if the CDD found on CDD's professional judgment with no particular factors, that less than half the project cannot reasonably be depicted with story poles, then the CDD would issue a report to planning commission, setting forth the recommendation, then PC wouldn't have to make the decision. And my one recommendation would be if the intention is to, the question I would pose back is, is the intention to leave in place that 50% trigger? Allowing the director to decide less than half could be story polled. I'm sorry, less than half could not be story polled. And thereby that would be simply a director decision, subject to appeal versus if the request is to drop more than half, then it goes to the, then it goes up to the commission. That would be fine. And if that were to happen, then the commission's decision would be uncabined. They can make their judgment based on the factors that are presented to them and what they see as a basis to allow or not allow story poles. So that would be, would be fine.
But I don't even want to list, I, I don't think I even want to list any of those options.
So if that's the case, then it would be, yeah, strike the entire story poll feasibility determination. And under planning commission review, then the process would be if the director finds that at least half cannot reasonably be depicted with story poles, then that goes to planning commission. And then there's no particular factors governing it. It would just be the director makes the decision based on their professional judgment. And then the planning commission makes a decision based on their judgment in public.
Okay, is that accomplished by striking that entire paragraph?
No.
Yes.
Well, look, it's, Matt, that wasn't, that wasn't entirely clear from your comment. So, so if Mary Sue moves to strike that entire paragraph and approve the rest, is that acceptable?
In order to accomplish what council, or what Mayor Protem Mauer is asking, we would also have to change the 50% to 100%. Would we not, Matt?
That's the, that's the underlying political question. If the goal is to take away discretion from the director entirely, then yes. Finds that, that any portion of the project cannot be depicted, then it goes to planning commission. I confess, I didn't, I didn't pick that piece up. Is the, is the, is the ask to have it so that the, the, the two, two states of the world are full story poles or less than full story poles? If less than full story poles, planning commission and no, no particular factors governing it. If that's the request, then Peter's correct.
And, and that, and that is, I believe, the request because the process to, to deliberate this publicly. Why wouldn't there be story poles?
Rather than- That's what you're, that's what you're moving is striking one paragraph and amending another paragraph.
Right.
As indicated by the city attorney.
Yes.
Are you, are you seconding that, Peter?
I am.
Okay, David, you had your hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, and I guess Mary Sue, the speaker, you or staff, if there are any instances where you're talking about that you're concerned where the director in the, in this case abused discretion or did not put story poles in as you would have liked to have seen. Why, why we're going to go ahead and throw this entire portion out? Because I thought part of the exception was for small homes, smaller projects such as even those who were, who had damage and burnt in a Woolsey fire. Although we might, as a, as a city, we made special exception there. As opposed to large projects, which we all agreed not only needed story poles, needed charrettes, needed signs, needed websites. So I, I'm asking, and I don't know of any, if there are any instances that you can provide me with or staff can that, where we missed the boat here.
I'm sorry, who's, 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 are you directing that question to?
It's to Mary Sue or to staff. I mean, I didn't, Mary Sue made the motion, so that's why I'm asking.
I was responding to my colleague, council member Kraut, who was familiar with a number of, of different, other different options where they did not put up story poles. And then gave the example of someone who, you know, the parking lot. So I could see where there were, there were more than I was aware of variances to not put them up. And Peter, I don't know if you want to elaborate there or staff, but that was my concern.
I can't hear. Okay, it's a political, it's, it's just a viewpoint, question and answer. I mean, I don't know, anyone can give answers. I, I, a lot of this is just, the questions that are being asked now are just, you know, viewpoints. They're not factual. So Peter, I don't know if there is an answer to that question.
There is a couple of factual answers and I, I can see that Tom and Maureen have answers all throughout one because it was directed at me. The Rasmick property had 40 something percent polls not going up. And Maureen was, was wise enough to bring it to the planning commission anyways, even though according to the letter of our ordinance, she would have had the authority to approve it. But she saw it was so significant, she brought it to the planning commission anyways. That was the one that comes to mind with the 120 degree rotation of those story poles. Unfortunately, the follow-up meeting was scheduled when I was out of town, so I wasn't there for the final vote on that one. I'm sure Maureen and Tom can share with us how many other times we have variances and how big of an impact this would be on our planning commission.
I don't know if I could share how many times, but I will at least give one more anecdotal, which is Havad, if any of you might remember that, and when it was going through the process, I don't think it went to council necessarily, but they had to do story polls and they were very concerned about the expense and the difficulty of doing it. And we worked with them and did some creative work to try to get as much of that silhouette portrayed. But there were issues of impacting oak trees. There were issues of impacting some of their critical spaces that included gathering spaces outdoors, play space for children because they had a residence there. I mean, some unique circumstances that under this procedures, the way they were written at the time, we had an ability to accommodate them. So I'm just going to point that as another anecdotal.
Okay, we need to kind of move along here. Alicia, your hand has been up a while.
So is the most, is the motion on the table to strike everything under story poll feasibility determination?
Yeah, as I understand it, yes, and also to amend the first sentence in the next paragraph to read if the CDD finds that any portion of the project mass cannot reasonably be depicted with story poles, CDD shall issue a report to the planning commission, setting forth the basis therefore.
So when I was on the planning commission, we adopted the story poll policy. And I remember this section being like a big issue, but I just want to kind of play devil's advocate on this one. That the issues of A and E were big issues about why some, like creativity sometimes has to come into play. I don't know. I feel like this might warrant more discussion than we're able to have tonight. And maybe staff could, I just want to make sure we're not, I get what we're trying to accomplish by making sure everyone has to follow the story poll policy, which we all agree with. But I want to make sure we're not striking things that have been put in place for a reason. I mean, maybe there's a way to, I don't know what the answer is, but I just want to make sure we're not getting rid of stuff where there's issues with fire access requirements or vehicular access and other security issues, which we put in there for a reason. Like I understand striking certain things, so people just don't get out of the requirement. But I want to make sure we're maintaining areas of safety when they need to be maintained. I just want to understand if we take away this, what could potentially happen?
Maureen has- If you take away the guidelines to be used either by a director or by a planning commission, then it's completely subjective. And what these guidelines do is really provide what are critical issues that a commissioner or a director should be looking at in justifying that a poll can or cannot be set or a depiction can or cannot be made. And that should be effectively service findings to a decision. Otherwise, you've got no structure whatsoever. I, I think you want to ground that decision making. And I think that's what council member Weintraub is referring to is all of the discussion that went into the creation that now the refinement of that list so that it's not an arbitrary decision by anyone. It has a true basis of analysis.
And we need, we need a little more finality here and decide what we're going to do. We've, we've talked about this for quite a long time. Tom, do you have a quick comment?
Only that if the motion maker would consider this, you could take these provisions that get to a basis for review and put them under the planning commission review section. And that would maybe be a middle of the road approach.
And thank you. And that's exactly what I was going to propose to, kind of circling back to what I think it was council member Kraut, maybe it was Glenn, I'm not sure who, saying that if, if they wanted a variance, it would go to the planning commission. A clean, and you could leave those, those things in there, but.
So what is the final, what does the final motion look like?
I would take up.
So council member Mauer, if I could just suggest, if you just change that CDD finds that 100% of the project mass cannot be depicted and leave everything else in, then it stays as we have it, except for the determination always goes to the planning commission.
There you go.
Yep. That's correct.
Is that your motion?
Wait, Peter, the first part, the first thing you mentioned, what page is that on? I just want to follow along.
So what I'd say on page three of the red line, story poll feasibility determination, we leave the whole paragraph as it's redlined. The next paragraph is planning commission review. And I would suggest that council, that Mayor Protem Mauer change her motion to read if the CDD finds that 100% of the project mass cannot reasonably be depicted with story poles. And the rest of it remains. And that just basically says that she'll do her analysis.
Perfect.
And then it'll go to the planning commission for a decision.
So you're changing from 50% to 100%. So that makes, great.
Okay, Mary Sue has made the motion. Peter, we'll second it, correct?
Yes.
All right, let's take the roll call.
Council member Kraut?
Aye.
Council member Shapiro?
Yes.
Council member Weintraub?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mauer?
Yes.
Mayor Basaja?
Aye.
5-0, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Um, we've been going two hours, so we're going to take a 10 minute break. We're on I'm eight. See you soon. So we have Mary Sue and Alicia, and then we will be starting. C D D staff, are we ready to go?
Yes, sir, you may begin in five seconds.
Okay. Okay, welcome back to our city council meeting. We're moving on to item eight, which is adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen fifty-one authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the Calabasas City Council and City Commissions pursuant to government code section five four nine five three E and providing direction on when to begin holding hybrid city council commission meetings, enabling members of the city council, commissioners and the public to participate remotely or in person. Um, Mari or Kendon to give the report?
I will do it, Mr. Mayor. Um, you just briefly stated it, so pursuant to Assembly Bill three sixty-one, signed by governor, by the governor, which went into effect on October first under executive order and fifteen dash twenty-one. The staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one seventeen fifty-one, authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the Calabasas City Council and City Commissions pursuant to government code section five four nine five three E. Um, under AB three six one, the city may continue having meetings using teleconferencing and virtual meeting technology as long as there is the gubernatorial proclaimed state of emergency and either one state or local officials impose or recommending measures that promote social distancing or two, the legislative body finding that meeting in person would present an imminent safety risk to attendees. In addition, the staff is seeking direction on when to begin holding hybrid city council commission meetings, enabling members of the city council, commissioners and the public to participate remotely or in person. And we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, first question, uh Matt. Um, in the motion, do we have to make the finding of which one it is or whether it's both?
Uh, we would recommend proceeding with the resolutions drafted, which notes that at the time we have um uh imminent safety risks to health and safety of attendees, but either one or the other is sufficiently legal.
Okay, so that's what that's what the thing is. So first of all, the first order of business is that mo is that resolution? And then we'll discuss the meeting. Um, do we have Mari, anyone in the public that was called in? I don't see any hands up. If anyone's like to speak on this item, please raise your hand at this time. Do has anyone called in, Mari?
We have no one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then um council questions or comments or a motion?
I'll move the item if.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maurer?
Yes.
Mayor Wasager?
Aye.
That carries five zero.
Thank you. That was a perfunctory uh motion. Now we have the direction to staff regarding um resumption of hybrid meetings. So let me, I'll start because I normally go last. Um you know, I've been wanting to do this for a while, and I think most cities around the county are back in person, at least in part, and I think it's important that we do meet in person or at least offer that option. Um, I would certainly want to do a hybrid version where we continue to allow teleconferencing for those people who feel uncomfortable, and it could even include council members. I I don't it doesn't matter to me or and or staff, but I think it's important that we reopen the meetings at city hall and make arrangements to do that. I would if if I would suggest perhaps we aim for the November meeting. Um, the October meeting is quite crowded with items, including one involving the mobile home park where we might get a significant volume of people coming, and I think it'd be easier to make, give us a month to prepare for this. So that would be my input. And who else would like to weigh in on this?
I'll weigh in.
Yes.
Um, maybe someone has updated information, but the last I spoke with our cog cities, nobody was back in person yet. That was a few weeks, I don't know, two weeks ago, so I don't.
Happened to Gora Hills.
Um, they went back for one meeting and then went remote.
Okay.
So I think we should just, we should just double check. Um I think that I know West Hollywood just announced that they're requiring proof of vaccination for all city facilities, including city hall. So I also want to discuss something like that, bringing people back in to our council chambers. I know that our numbers are on the de- decline, but even just today, I learned about a resident who um has COVID and in the way that they caught it was like very similar to the conditions that our council meeting would present. So I, you know, I just think that the numbers are declining, we're going in the right direction, but I just would want to make sure that all health and safety measures are put into place and what that would look like, and I would also be in favor of requiring proof of vaccination. So just some things to think about and also hearing um what our neighboring cities are doing.
Mary Sue?
Um, we did talk about this a short while ago, and I thought there was consensus that when we did return that it would be vaccination required. Um, and um, so that's, I'm still in support of that. Um, I would like to try at least one meeting a month. Um, I've always been of the feeling that you know, local government is kind of the seat of democracy and where, you know, the public can gather, didn't be heard, and so I don't want to lose that um personal connection. Um, I'm I'm less concerned with what other cities are doing. I think that um if we are comfortable enough and come up with enough safeguards that are are hybrided, um we could do it, but I'd be I'd be supportive of a a November start um under the circumstances I mentioned.
Alicia?
I just meant to add too, we also have to remember that when we come back, we're going to be subject to the mask mandate, which would mean we'd have to be wearing our masks indoors, which is difficult for all those hours. So just putting that out there as well.
So I wear my mask all day long at work. It you get used to it once you get the right mask, so it's, yeah, but it's not ideal.
Peter?
Uh, I'm flexible and I'd uh probably abstain from this vote just to let my fellow council members weigh in on what they're comfortable with. I think from a public standpoint, we have the options to uh to do this remotely. Um and and I think that's great because we've seen a big uptick in the number of people attending, I think. Um, but I don't think we've seen a big uptick in the number of people commenting. So uh I I have to agree with Mayor Protem Maurer that, you know, that face-to-face contact is 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 essential. Um, the mask part, I don't have a problem wearing a mask all the time. Um, I do think that it's a lot better when the public can see our faces and our facial expressions as we're talking. Um, so I think uh it's gonna be a lot more productive of a meeting after the mask mandates are over. Uh, again, this would also support the proof of vaccination. Um, I guess I'm just throwing out some random comments there. I I am pretty flexible and open to whatever my colleagues are comfortable with.
David? David, I I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Uh, I am also supportive and have been supportive of a uh vaccination requirement um for meetings and for those coming to the meetings. I I don't know if that would create some difficulties. I could imagine it would, and I have been extremely cautious or supportive of being cautious, obviously. Uh, this is a year and a half now that none of us wish ever happened, and for Alicia and James, uh your terms as mayors, uh not fun to say the least, although you made the best of it, both of you. Um, as far as in person, I love seeing people, love being in person, uh but I am not quite ready for that myself, uh and and would think we have a ways to go still, even in our in our own city or city hall to make that uh more comfortable, at least for some of us. Um, and and I'm not, I'm not deciding or or going solely on what our neighboring cities, I never try and do that. But uh there is there is, there is a pretty consistent group with the exception of one, I guess, or or none that are meeting virtually. Um, they can see our faces, as you say now, Peter, the public can see our faces and certainly see if we're smiling, laughing, uh scowling, or drinking a cup of coffee um with a mask on. You you certainly can't tell that really. Um, so I am, I'm cautious, uh and as as long as we can do things extremely safely, I'll look forward to the time when we are back in person or hybrid at that point.
Matt, um, let me ask you, on the vaccine mandate for entry into a council meeting, would we have to set up an outside or another location for someone to physically be, or could we just bar them from city hall? How would that work? And also, are there I mean, what happens to religious exemptions, medical exemptions? Are those, do they bring them to city hall to to show us? What what is that?
Provided that we offer an alternative way to participate in the meeting, such as maintaining the Zoom system, then we would be able to impose a vaccination mandate without exception at city hall because the alternative method to participate in government, to petition government exists through the Zoom system. If we wanted to drop the Zoom system and require vaccination, I'd want to analyze that further than just this moment. But I think the the question is, I understand it is keep the Zoom system, allow folks to participate remotely and require vaccination, and that would be legal.
Okay, so if someone came to city hall with a medical exemption and a doctor's letter, whatever it is they they have and wanted to speak, we would redirect. And wanted to speak, we would redirect them to Zoom?
Correct, and that would be legal.
Okay, well, and I anticipate this would mean checking someone at the door.
Right, and if they had, we would have to set up a system to, uh, check vaccination cards or. Um. Other electronic proof at the door. And in doing so, there's a requirement under the Brown Act that we allow people to anonymously attend a meeting, so we wouldn't record anything. We would just verify. Vaccination and then.
Right.
And then move forward. Well, yeah, we would have to set up a, a. Lack of a better word, a checkpoint at the door.
Okay, and then, of course, you would, you would, when we post the agenda, there'd be something on there saying that, and then giving the, inviting them to attend Zoom if they have. If they're not vaccinated, even for medical or religious or whatever reasons that they choose.
Correct, and we'd have to include how that alternative process works.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, that's fine. Um, so I heard, I think. Three people who are. Tentatively interested in the November tenth date. We could also agendize this on October twenty-seventh, just to make a final decision, in case things change one way or the other. On a larger county level. Alicia.
I just want to understand what our chambers would look like, like what our setup would be, and I don't think anyone's answered that yet. I see Kendon.
So, uh, council, based on the direction that was provided, uh, last time we spoke about this. Um, the goal of staff would be to, um, create probably the most strictest, um, rules possible. Our, our thought right now would be, and we could outline this in a written format and send this out, but the idea would that, would be that, uh, council members. Um, and the city manager, city attorney would be inside the council chambers. We would allow out inside in the lobby, other participants, we could have that on the screen. If somebody were to want to address the council in public comment, they could then come in, uh, to the microphone and then leave. But again, everybody inside the building would have to show proof of vaccination to even be inside the building. So the idea is we would have a very limited group of individuals inside the council chambers. Staff would still be allowed to present items via Zoom, um, and, and therefore not necessitate that they would be in the council chambers.
Why don't I suggest? Uh, that we plan for November tenth, but put it on the October twenty-seventh agenda for a final decision. Can we do that? Yes, Mary Sue.
One other quick recommendation, again, this was from a meeting I attended. One of the redistricting meetings in person, half of the commissioners were present and sitting at a dais and the other half. Were not, and the public, um, was in the building and also, um, at home. And for the commissioners present, they have their own laptop in front of them. Um, that they were actually watching the proceedings, um, and commenting too, and they had a laptop up at. The public, um, speaking podium, so that when you were viewing the proceedings, everybody. Was featured, whether they were home or at the dais, so. It gave the flexibility of the commissioners who wanted to be present, they were present, if they wanted to stay home still, they could stay home, so. Um, and that required laptop in front of everyone, and I thought that was, that was really effective. And I sat there in, in the audience and. Um, and so people could, could be there too, they wouldn't necessarily have to be out, but anyway, just another option, but. Making it so that anyone who wasn't ready to come in. Could be at home and look like the rest of us. Or the, those present.
Okay.
Just another option.
Peter.
Yeah, just a, a question or a comment. You mentioned. Uh, Kendon, that you would, uh, and I know we discussed this earlier, that, that attendees would be outside in the lobby. Uh, if we're truly coming back in person, I would. Imagine that the, the public coming back wants to be inside where they can sit down and, and watch and participate in the whole thing. Is there not a? Uh, a limited number of people that we could have in there, or, or because otherwise, then. We might be making our council safe and making the lobby really crowded. Uh, so I, I don't understand if we're coming back, how that really comes into play.
No, uh, thank you, council member. That was just based, again, you mentioned it based on, I, what we understood as the recommendation. Or suggestion at, um, our last discussion on this. We have set up the council chambers. Uh, for other meetings and have been able to separate. Chairs six, eight feet apart, and then, so there would be a limited number of individuals inside the chamber if we wanted to do that. And then we could also include chairs out in the lobby if there was, uh, additional, additional participants. Again, it's just, uh, depending on the, the flavor and, and, um, uh, interest of the council, how you'd like to do that.
Wasn't there one point where we were going to have Founder's Hall used for gathering the public?
Yes, we did talk about that as another option. A- again, um. We could set that up, i- i- it would just depend on the number of attendees. Uh, our thought is, is, and until we actually try this. Our thought as staff is that most people will still want to attend via Zoom. Um, and participate that way instead of sitting in the lobby or in Founder's Hall. Now, should it be a, a, a topic of discussion that? Wants, uh, the, the residents want to come in and voice their opinion in person. We could do that, and it would just require more staffing to have the different rooms set up. Because then we would require a checkpoint at, at Founder's Hall as well.
Alicia.
I, I think when we had this discussion last time, things were, um. You know, numbers were even worse, so we're trending in the right direction. That I think if we are going to go back at some point, that people should be allowed in the council chambers, or else we might as well just stay on Zoom. But I think we have to be able to, like, limit the capacity and keep people distanced, um. You know, I don't know how many, every other seat, every two seats, whatever that is. But I don't know what's on the agenda for this meeting that you're proposing. Is it a heavy agenda? Is it a light agenda?
The tenth? I don't know that it's entirely, you know, done yet. The twenty-seventh could potentially be crowded.
Yeah, well, like the mayor, I would recommend that we do not do the twenty-seventh, just because of the public hearing that will be held that evening. But we could look at November tenth and then also for sure December, meeting with the reorg, uh, depending how we'd like to do that.
All right, so we'll put it on the next agenda. Mary Sue, did you have a?
Yeah, just one last quick thought, since. Almost, well, every move we've made has been aligned with the county, which has been aligned with. Science and data from CDC, maybe, maybe there's a number that we get to that, um. Makes us feel comfortable to open up City Hall, and if that number should go up, then we go back to Zoom. Um, I, I just. Rather than winging it a little bit here, um. It seems like we should be looking at the numbers and letting that do some of our. Help us decide, so.
We don't have to decide till for two weeks. So we can compile the numbers, we can look at, we can maybe, Kendon, do a survey of LA County cities. I mean, we can look at all the data we want.
And there's a public. And there's a public health call on Friday, like, which is intended for questions like this, so it'd be a perfect time to ask that.
Great idea. Who's on that call? Will you be on that call?
I'll be on it. It's not definite that your question gets asked, but we have contacts that we can, um, reach out to.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on because this is coming back on the twenty-seventh, it looks like. But Kendon, maybe the tenth of November, maybe not, we'll see how our discussion is.
Uh, so with that, Mayor, we'll plan for the tenth, and unless things change on, at our next meeting and direction is otherwise.
Okay. Moving on to new business, item number nine is providing direction, uh, to staff on when, I'm sorry. Providing direction on the reallocation of the emergency operations wildfire resiliency grant. Funds awarded by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy to the city of Calabasas, who's delivering this report?
Aaron, that would be me. Let me share my screen if I can. Uh, council, do you have the, the slideshow?
Yes.
Okay, uh, just a couple of minor slides here. I want to just provide some background. In May, the city was awarded four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. To, um. Uh, to be used. Uh, the initial grant that we submitted was to, the idea was to purchase a generator at the Agora Hills. Calabasas Community Center, uh, with the intent that this would be, uh, an ideal location for a secondary EOC. And even m- more important, a, um, regional, uh, emergency operations center. Additionally, the four hundred and fifty thousand was to be used for higher fire hardening improvements. Or structure hardening improvements at the facility, that would be both the building and the landscape surrounding the building. And then also, uh, upgrading our, um, AM radio and other communication equipment. As we've continued to look at the, the progress of the community center, and we know there, there's delays. Uh, the intent of the, the grant funds was to have these mon- monies be expended a- as quickly as possible. Uh, in fact, uh, the, the conservancy, their goal is that, is that recipients of these grants are able to turn this money around quickly. Uh, the idea hopefully showing to the state that by allocating and spending these monies so, uh. Expeditiously that, uh, we might be able to see other grants come into the region. Um, as a result, and because of the delays, uh, of the roof, a project and, um. Other repairs at the building, we, we now feel that it's important to look at other options. To utilize the grant funds. Now, this would require, um, approval from the conservancy on changing these. But before, but, but, but before we submitted a, um, request to the conservancy, we wanted to get. Um, ideas from the council and, um, uh, also direction. What we've proposed are a couple of different, a few different items, I'll review those. Uh, Agora Hills, uh, this was their application, but they used, or they requested funds to purchase a trailer. That would be equipped as a mobile emergency operations center. Uh, we've also looked at utilizing the, the grant funds for the formation. And or ongoing operation of fire safe councils. Uh, we do know that Epic, our, our, our fire safe council here in Calabasas. Did receive a grant from the city for twenty-five thousand dollars that was allocated out, out of the Woolsey Fire Fund monies. That, uh, the city received. Uh, again, this could be additional funding for those types of initiatives. We've looked at, um, fire hardening initiatives on publicly owned and operated facilities, that might be. Uh, city facilities, others that might benefit from that. Fire detection and mapping equipment and software. Um, council member Weintraub, this was something that came up at the cog. At the most recent meeting, that the, the city of Agora Hills is using some of this equipment and software. Uh, to look at, uh, beefing up their emergency preparedness, um, uh, infrastructure. And then finally, um. Uh, home hardening and education and outreach for residents and businesses. Now, one thing that I did not put on here, but we would still continue, I do have it, I'm sorry. Would also continue to upgrade our original communication equipment, uh, the AM radio station, um. Perhaps looking at solar, solar, uh, backup batteries, uh, for that, uh, repeater and so forth. So these are some of the ideas that we've had. Again, it would be, um, require approval of the conservancy. But before we submitted that request, we wanted to solicit coun- council's input. So with that, I, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, uh, any members of the public, uh, who wish to speak at this time, please raise your hands. I don't see any. So we'll go to council comments. Any council comments? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I see Brian Cameron's raised his hand. So Mari, why don't we bring Brian Cameron from the public into the meeting? Okay, Brian, hello.
Hello, thank you. Um. The, uh, Mayor Buzajin, Mayor Potemhour and council members, thank you for affording me the time to speak on agenda number nine. Uh, I last came before the council on June twenty-third, at which time I announced the formation of Epic FSC. Emergency Preparedness in Calabasas, a fire safe council. And requested a grant of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Woolsey Fire Settlement Funds to cover our cart, our startup expenses. I said at that time, our mission is to inspire, quote, to inspire Calabasas residents to take actions. Necessary to mitigate natural disaster risks through education, coordination of resources. And the establishment of decentralized resources, physical and human. By engaging with and motivating local residents, Epic FSC will prioritize protecting human life. Existing structures and the Santa Monica biome in which we live, end of quote. The council generously approved our request, allowing us to create our not-for-profit five oh one C three corporation. Build a website and acquire necessary insurance coverage. Like every other not-for-profit organization, we are now seeking additional funding. Epic FSC, uh, organized its mission around three pillars, wildfire mitigation, disaster preparation and recovery. And a communications platform, which we have named emergency communications to home occupants or ECO. Our current priority is wildfire mitigation. As we spelled out in a recent grant application, the Epic FSC approach. Will be through our established relationships with homeowner associations, community groups, and direct solicitation. We will be developing with professional advisors, a train the trainers program. That will allow us to significantly expand the number of certified evaluators and hence the number of homes that will be fire hardened. Three of our board members have been through the highest training program, and we will soon be going into the field to conduct home hardening evaluations. But three evaluators cannot be expected to adequately mitigate the wildfire risks of approximately eighty-eight hundred homes. For this reason, we request additional funding to, to support these initiatives. One, retain the services of a qualified highest trainer to conduct training sessions for Epic FSC recruits. Uh, two, recruit, qualify and support highest evaluators. Three, create a scheduling process to ensure individuals who want our mitigation services receive them. Uh, four, identify the five most common highest recommendations. And produce videos that can be accessed by Calabasas residents on demand. And finally, define a feedback loop between the homeowner and Epic FSC and Epic FSC and the city. To determine the effectiveness of the process in the ult- ultimate outcome. I hope you will agree that Epic FSC is a valuable resource for the city that is worthy of additional funding. You can find out more about Epic FSC by dropping by our booth at the pumpkin festival. Or visiting our website at W W W dot epic hyphen F S C dot com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um. I see no other comments, so we'll turn to council member comments. I'll, I'll say, Mary Sue, thank you for helping to get this grant in the first.
Mr. Mayor, we, we have another hand, Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
This is ours.
Another hand went up, okay. All right, uh, it's either John or Joanne Sauer.
This is, uh. This is Joanne's worst half. So anyhow, uh. Reasoned, um, the, uh, the money was originally set up for the community center and. I've heard that the community center is running into trouble, but, you know, we, we get a lot of fires over here on the west side. And, you know, since we've lived here, we've, we've had a couple of fires come through that have burned down houses. And, 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 and a bunch of others, and what I'd. Hate to see is that this money is going to be leaving, uh, the community center and. And, uh, our emergency preparedness over here on the west side. So that, uh, and then be diverted elsewhere, and I guess that's where I don't understand, is where is this money going? Uh, and is that what you plan to do? But as you're considering that, please consider what can we do over on the west side to make sure that we have protection over here? To, 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 to stand up to these fires. Thank you.
Okay, final call for public comment. Okay. We're going to close the public comment period. And we're moving to the council. Uh, thank you, Mary Sue, for your, um. For helping to get this grant. I'm okay with the staff recommendations and giving some flexibility. I, I don't have any strong opinion as to. If it's not going to be the community center, then it, you know, it, it, we have to be flexible in where it goes. So, um, I, I, you know, that's my feeling. Does anybody have any comment on the staff report? Kendon, can you come up with, um. I mean. I mean, is there any more specificity needed or is this just?
No, Mayor, the the only thing is, we just wanted to make sure we didn't miss anything. If there was some strong feelings or other ideas, and so again, just looking for input. And if if this is okay, we'll proceed with that request to the the conservancy.
Okay, I see. Now I see council members do have comments. Mary Sue.
Oh, I'll go last because.
And Peter?
Yeah, thank you. I I do want to address our our comments from the public here. I I think it in, it needs a deeper explanation as to why we would need to spend these funds elsewhere. And I think it's important to point out that as much as we are working to get the Agora Hills Calabasas Community Center open again, it does not appear to be something that we're going to be able to do quickly. In addition, when we've talked about the feasibility of the community center, one of the things that was brought up was that as an emergency operations center, it would need to be utilized at the drop of a hat, which may impact the rentability of the rooms at the community center. So a number of things were brought up that make it one, not readily convertible into an emergency operations center, and two, perhaps not feasible as one. So I like the idea of a mobile emergency operations center as outlined in the the staff report. Because that would be something that could be utilized to protect the east or the west side of Calabasas and could be moved from one place to another as one area is threatened and another is not. So I think it's a good use of our funds, and I I I think it's a good way to reallocate money that cannot be spent currently at the Agora Hills Calabasas Community Center.
David?
Yes, and quickly I will echo the sentiments of Councilmember Kraut as far as the mobile unit and also the fact that I think all of us were disappointed these funds at this point can't be used for the generator as originally was anticipated for the community center. The only other thing I might bring up or might suggest with portion of these funds is there are some experts working with other cities in our region, in our cog, on ways to protect cities. We heard obviously about home evaluations, which right now are free but may not become free. So maybe there could be some funds for that setup in the future as well to help home hardening and brush clearance, things like that. But they're all good suggestions before we go ahead and say yes to something. I'd like to either see a specific suggestion other than what we have, a detail, or just leave it in the hands of our city manager, as I think we are looking at. Thank you.
Alicia?
I support the staff recommendation. I'm very supportive of the mobile unit, especially because we don't exactly even know that in the event of an emergency, would we even be able to get to the community center? So I just think having that flexibility would be a great thing to serve the entire community. And just I want to make sure we're continuing to look at all opportunities. I know at the cog and Kendon, you mentioned that the city of Agora just hired a company to help with mapping with evacuation routes and different things. So just want to make sure we're always doing what we can. But I support the staff recommendation, and I think the mobile unit would be a great asset to the community.
So Kendon, it sounds like the staff recommendation is okay with the council.
Yeah. Can I say something?
Yes.
Because I'm not, I'm not, I have some thoughts because I didn't put this list together. I just want to. Yes, I, the mobile E O C, and maybe we could even keep it on the other side of the city. Find a a place where it could be easily accessed if it's one of our backup evacuation areas. Formation and operation of fire safe councils. A fire safe council is not, a single fire safe council is not meant to take the entire city. And our city is spread out, and so maybe on the west side of the city, we could provide supporting funds also for another fire safe council to get started. Hardening initiatives for our own facilities. Yes, definitely. Fire detection, mapping, equipment, and software. I don't know what that is. And it's, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to just pluck really good ideas that aren't really, without a consultant saying, yes, you must have this or this is good. I almost wonder if we should instead have and and Kendon, I don't know if we could do this. Consulting fees. Let's bring on an emergency response expert that we've been kind of talking about. A consultant to get our staff through drills of E O C, on a, running an E O C, looking at our evacuation access, telling us what software we need to have to have the best, telling us how we could utilize the E O C to the best of the, our abilities. So I don't think we have that expertise on staff. What if we got all these things? Then then what? I really am a strong proponent of upgrading our emergency equipment. And if we needed additional funding for our A M radio station, there it is. Even software or the ability to talk at home or, you know, monitor our A M information. I think that's great. And of course, home hardening education, we all saw this evening how invaluable that will be. So the only thing I'm not I'm not comfortable with, maybe it's because I don't know what mapping it is, and I I'll trust you if you tell me that we have to have it, but I'd almost rather see a consultant help us. And there's more money to come, by the way. There is a lot more money from the state through Cal Fire out to, out to conservancies. And it would help if we had a plan. And again, this is where I think we need subject matter expert at a very high level who has run E O Cs to help us. So, I mean, I've, I've expressed my concern about the mapping software. When I sit there at the dais or and Kendon is in the audience, you're going to be asked why you want that mapping software and you know, how it's going to work in the city. So if you're familiar enough, because we can't just give this to them as is. Everything else is pretty much self-explanatory. Those are just my thoughts. But we do have to prepare that more money is coming. And so and it's one thing to write grants and get the money, and it's the other to implement programs and make sure we have the staff and a plan, a vision for for what we're doing and.
Well, I think I heard four, I don't know exactly, Mary Sue, maybe four and a half people comfortable with staff having flexibility in this.
Yeah, but you can, yes. But you can't add things once, this is going back to the conservancy.
Correct.
So it'll be approved as is. And then you have to, you have flexibility, yes, but you have to submit, you know, that you've been accountable for these funds.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe what we could do is add a line item, since there's no cost. And Kendon, I'm not sure even what an E O C costs. That would be the top expense, and maybe a consultant might be a second, and then the rest. But maybe we could add a consultant. I don't even know if that will if that will work.
Okay, I I still would prefer to give staff flexibility to come up with a final document. I don't think we're going to hammer out an exact thing tonight.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
That that's what I meant, not that it didn't have to be specifically when it got submitted. Alicia?
I just wanted to add, so everyone can look it up later. It's flame mapper dot com is the software.
I've seen it, and there's, there's fifty.
Yeah, I just, that's just. Where like. That some of our local cities have found success. I mean, they've been, I just want to tell you, that's the one that was discussed at the cog.
Okay, Kendon, did you have some thoughts?
Yes, Mayor, I think what I can do is, Mayor Protem, I'll reach out to Rory and ask about the idea of a consultant.
Good idea.
And then, as you did, as you just mentioned, all of these ideas will be contingent on budget, meaning we're limited with the four hundred and fifty thousand and the one hundred thousand dollar match. And so we will cost these out. And we're required when we resubmit this reallocation request to the conservancy to provide those numbers. And so naturally, some may not fit just because of the cost. We're hoping that everything will, will, will be there. And if if council's okay, what we can do is maybe Councilmember Weintraub, what we can do is maybe remove the fire detection, mapping, equipment, and software. We don't have a specific on there. Do some more research on that and and then bring that back as a possible expense with our Woolsey Fire Fund settlement monies.
Yeah, no, I had, I was just something that I didn't even know it was going to be on the list. It was just something that I thought we're going to also talk about in our in our sub, in our subcommit, in our subcommittee meeting. Just, you know, just there's all of these tools out there that I just want to be able to explore and see what the best fit is for our city, not necessarily that that was going to be on the list tonight, but I just wanted to provide the name that you and I had heard.
Okay, we're going to move on.
One last, one last thing, the conservancy meets the fourth Monday of every month. It would be great. I mean, we already have, you know, we were supposed to have spent this by September before fire season started. So if there's any way staff can put something together and get in touch with Rory so that it can be on the agenda by the fourth Monday of October, I think that would, they would be grateful. That was the message they sent to us as soon as possible.
Okay, that that means staff's going to have to move in the next couple of days to do this because that's a week from next Monday. And they're going to have to post the agenda ahead of time, so.
Yeah.
You have less than a week to prepare. All right, we do need to move on. Item number ten is city council consideration of the creation of a sustainability task force and appointments to the task force. So we've talked about this before. The staff report's very light. I think we can get dispensed with this fairly quickly. I think we all previously had expressed some level of support for this. And Mary Sue, I know this was your idea. I assume you want to be on the task force.
Well, I, I would, I would enjoy working on this task force, and it really, the primary task related to this is the Climate Action Plan, which is a lot of work that needs to be done in a short amount of time. And, um, yeah, I would appreciate.
Okay, so I think you're well suited for this because this was your idea, and you've already worked on a few projects regarding this. And you also suggested budgeting a certain amount in reserve for Climate Action Plan, which we did for the first time in the last budget. So we, that means we have one other space. Would anyone else like to be on the task force?
I would, if no one else is anxious to. I'm certainly interested in the subject and be happy to work with Mayor Protem Mauer.
Okay, um. I don't think we, I think you guys can come up with your own mission and agenda once, once the task force is created. We don't need to do that tonight. So there's been two people who expressed interest in a two-person task force, so I don't think we need to beat a dead horse. So the motion would be to approve the appointments of Mary Sue Mauer and David Shapiro to the task force. Who would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and this would be also the creation of the task force, of course. Who would second it? David?
I'll second it, yes.
Okay, all right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mauer?
Aye.
Mayor Bosajah?
Aye.
Terry Saxzero?
Okay, and this will be added, as you can see, to our list of task force. I I did skipped over, I'm sorry, but there was no public comment. No one had raised their hands. No one had called in, Mari?
No one, Mister Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to the check register. Any comments or questions? Then we will go to task force reports.
I have a comment. One of the public speakers, I know we're not, we don't respond to them directly. But, um, it was regarding our legal fees and what kind of monitoring we do of that. And I, James, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there was a time when we really couldn't talk to our attorneys without going through Tony or the city manager, get kind of clearance just to ensure that, you know, the bills stayed down. Matt, I don't know if you have any suggestions, Kendon, but I wanted to just follow up on that.
Well, I hope that Kendon puts in place, you know, or is putting in place that practice of, you know, before a city attorney can do anything other than answer a question like a very basic question. There's no legal research or work is done without the city manager's permission to the council's direction. And and the city attorney should know that, too. Obviously, you'd have to turn away the council member gently and say, I can't really work on that, you know. Correct?
Yes, that's correct. If I get a request to write a new program, it's let's go back and get direction of city mayor or get three votes at council. The other cost control measure that's in place is to ensure that questions from line staff are to review a document, not to draft it on the upfront, not to duplicate staff work, but to review it instead of drafting it. And if I get a request to draft something that's not, that's not appropriate for me to draft, again, this is to gently return it back and say, nope, draft it, we'll talk through it, draft it, and then I'll review the draft once it's ready. And I believe the, and I'll ask Kendon to confirm, but the entry for this register, I believe reflected a couple of months all in one payment rather than a hundred thousand in a single month. I think it was two or three months together. And of course, we have seen some increased costs of late with the West Village litigation and with some of the pandemic-related components and a couple of employment matters. But I don't, it was not a hundred thousand a month. That would be well out of character.
And that's correct, Mayor and Council. That that is for several months of billing that just accumulated at the same time. So I I think, Matt, I know there were some perhaps errors in my email that was coming from your office on a couple of those invoices, but that's been resolved.
Yeah, I believe that has been taken care of. And as noted, we're acutely aware of the fact that that every dollar spent on us is taxpayer money and the need to do so efficiently.
We have done cost analyses in the distant past about in-house counsel. As with most smaller cities, it does not make sense financially. And it's very hard to do. Plus, you don't get the full support of a full law firm. You're getting one attorney, basically, with some, you know, apparel, you know, a legal secretary or something, as opposed to the full panoply of services that a larger firm might, might offer. I would also add, and I'm correcting if I'm wrong, to the city attorney and city manager, a citizen that sends in a story request or a legal question or said, I want access to the city attorney, they too are turned away correctly.
Absolutely. My client is the city is controlled by the city council, not any individual member of the public. There too, they're gently returned back to legal aid services. And we've seen some requests of late, and again, it's, here's legal aid for that request.
Okay, so that, any other questions?
Oh, I just want to add for the public's benefit that when we have closed discussions that might involve litigation, we are very good about asking about what the expected costs of that litigation, and it's taken into consideration in our deliberation. But that was very helpful to hear all that. Thank you.
Of course, um, task force reports. Nothing. Okay, city manager?
Oh, I have one.
Oh, go ahead, Alicia.
As through the cog, I attended the Malibu Connect Day, which was where unhoused individuals come to seek services. It was held at the the county, the former courthouse in Malibu, and there were tons of services for individuals. So I attended along with Terry Dipple and Michael McConville and representatives from others, staff from other cities. But it was a really great event to see and volunteer on and just to really understand all the services out there and some of the issues preventing people from getting housing, some of the housing that's out there, but just continuing to get educated on the subject. And we had a homeless task force meeting as well. So Peter and I will bring more to the full council, but. So, um, Peter and I will bring more to the full council, but we're continuing to do a lot of work on the subject.
Okay, city managers' report?
Um, Mayor, just a couple items, uh, like you, I want to compliment our communication staff for the work that they did on, on the state of the city. Um, and in fact, I, this was my first state of the city event and I, I was able to attend it with my wife. And, and one of the things that I commented as we left, um, not just our communication staff. But, uh, 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 I, I want to compliment our entire staff as I watched the slides. Um, I, I walked away just feeling very impressed, um, with the quality of our staff to be able to do so much. With sixty-five full-time employees and maybe a hundred and fifteen part-time employees. The, the, that slideshow really put it into perspective of what our staff does. That they really aim to please, uh, uh, council. I hope they, that you know that they want to please you, that they want to please the community. And I think that was evident in, in just that overview of the projects that we saw in those slides. And, and so just again, hats off to our, our staff, uh, for what they accomplished in, in just a few, uh, months. With, uh, limited staffing and, uh, uh, limited time constraints. And then also, uh, um, council, uh, Mayor, I wanted to introduce our new director of community services, Erica Green. Um, she's with us tonight. Uh, we, we're so fortunate to have her. She's, um, started off this last week and a half at a, a neck-breaking pace. And we're trying to keep up with her. And so I wanted to allow her to introduce herself to council. I know that, um, you've met her, uh, personally, but we wanted to also introduce her to the community and then I'll turn some time over to Erica.
Thank you, Kendon. Honorable Mayor, council members and members of the public, as the city manager mentioned, my name's Erica Green. And I'm delighted to join the city of Calabasas team. I know it's getting late, um, and I don't wanna take too much of your time, so I'll be brief. Um, a little bit about me, I have over twenty years of experience in the parks and recreation industry. Almost twenty years with the city of Riverside and three with the city of Rain Valley. I look forward to working alongside the, uh, city of Calabasas team to serve our community. And I would like to thank everyone, um, Kendon, staff and the community for providing guidance and information. To help acclimate me to the community and the department this past week. It's been a whirlwind, but it's been great. Um, so that's a brief, uh, about me. Thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, I look forward to the opportunity to serve the residents of Calabasas.
Thank you. Welcome to Calabasas.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we're now at the point of, of, uh, future agenda item requests. I'll start out by asking Kendon, um, I think, um, Zachary Rosoff, who had written to us previously. Uh, about this subject, I think his, uh, suggestion is excellent. I know that those lid locks are very, uh, useful in other areas. And I've noticed numerous dumpsters around town, um, kept in a very poor condition with respect to rodents. And, and other health concerns. So, um, I would like it to go to environmental commission, but I, I, I don't want it to stay there too long. Have them work on it and bring back something, a recommendation, if you would. I mean, if, if there, I assume there's other council members who agree. I, I, I can't do that directly. Does anyone else wanna do that?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, but I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't wait for city facilities to get those locks. We can get those immediately. He's absolutely right that food waste, um, is the number one feeding source for rodents. And to eliminate that really makes an impact on rodents. But I'd also like to expand that to not only rodenticide and those, um, I'm sorry, the, the locks on the trash cans. I'd like to look at, uh, have them look at, um, rap- raptor poles and things that we can put up around our parks. And where else we might have, um, rodents. It's not only, um, rats and squirrels and, and. And things like that, that, uh, could get reduced in number by other means. So, I would just expand that a little bit.
Okay, um, any other requests for future agenda items? All right, then I will.
James?
Yeah.
I have, I do wanna get more information on the L M D districts and the administrative costs from staff. And just have, I mean, I think they said they were gonna have a meeting, that maybe we could just get an update after that meeting takes place. Just to make sure we're all understanding that.
Do you want that as a future agenda item, or do you want it in the significant activity report? How would you like it?
Um.
Or just the city manager's report and see if we wanna take it from there?
Yeah, or maybe Kendon can use his best judgment after you guys have that meeting. Um, if you think it warrants more discussion, based on the letters that we've received and just conversations. If it needs to come back to the whole council for a discussion.
Well, ju- just do it under city manager's report and then we can ask him to do that if it's needed.
Okay.
Um, David, did you ever hand it there?
For a second, I was just gonna second that if it was a, a, a gen item. And then the only other comment, I know it's on there, is a future gen item. It has been for quite a while. But we, we talk about, and it keeps coming up, using potentially Woolsey funds and we've used some. I've asked for a discussion on that for quite some time. I would like to at least make sure we get it heard by November. Uh, I realize there's other items that bump it and I, I get that. But rather than spending it before we talk about it, I'd really like to have that discussion.
Okay, we'll put that in pretentatively for November tenth, because our October twenty-seventh is actually pretty full, I think. Um, okay, now with that. Yeah, what? Okay, um, okay, and with that, we have no further items. We're gonna adjourn back into closed session. So, can you, uh, resend the link or a new link? I don't know if we're using the old one or not.
I'll, I'll send you the, uh, previous link.
Okay, thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.